All right, let's call this meeting to order, roll call.
All right, Ms. Austin.
Here.
James Coyle.
Here.
Scott Jackson.
Here.
Andrew Frydell.
Here.
Karen Bramerson.
Here.
Terri Moore.
Here.
Ira Muston.
Here.
All right, so in the lead, Jim.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Proof of posting, a copy of the notice was delivered on nine two, it was faxed to Star News, posted here at the Black Earth Municipal Building and the Black Earth Post Office. It was to our, posted on our webpage, www-blackearthwisconsin.com, and faxed for posting to the Cross Plains State Bank, Black Earth branch.
Ms., can I ask that we amend the agenda to include an operator's license tonight?
Yes. So we need a motion on that? I make a motion, we amend the agenda to include an operator's license. Any discussion? No in favor? I don't mind. All right, public input. Action item number five, a discussion action on annual court updates. Judge Crowe.
Good evening, everybody. How's it going tonight? I am Judge Crowe, I'm the municipal judge for Black Earth and Maiselany currently. Usually I have came into the village board meetings when COVID happened, that kind of stopped. I'm back to kind of give yearly updates, see where we're at. From a historical sense, when I took over the court, we were doing things by pen and paper. Everything was being manually entered into Microsoft Word. At that point, we decided to upgrade to Quick Clerks. The village, both villages decided to chip in, and that saved us quite a bit of money. With that, we've actually taken some steps forward. After the flood, we got paused on that, and then after COVID, we paused.
You're good.
Okay, it's Tuesday, right? Okay, so the thing is, so after, like, so finally after all those setbacks, losing a couple of court clerks, Beth Marty has taken over the role of court clerk and done an absolutely outstanding job. The things that we could not get done before COVID, she was able to do pretty readily with the help of Shelley, actually who did quite a bit of back work with her. But what happened was, we were not really able to do collections, because you had to go through trips, and that was a lot of extra hours. So what we did was, we were able to use the Quick Clerks program we have, and now do automated pushouts for collections. Shelley was able to set that, or sorry, Shelley and Beth, I should say, were able to set that up and get that going, which has resulted in, I think a couple of weeks ago, we just got done backlogging $49,000 with the write-offs. So that's just for two years. So we're gonna be able to go back quite a ways and start doing some collections, things that we should have been able to do, but because of, you know, with the flood, and with COVID, and coming out of that, we're not really able to get to. The other thing we're able to do recently is to get online payments. Those were never an option. So when people come to court now, they can actually pay in court through their phone or whatever electronic means they want. That is a system that doesn't cost anything. All the money is paid for by fees that they pay whenever they pay the ticket online. So, with that being said, I'm also here to ask for Beth to give a raise. Beth needs a raise. Sorry, she makes 15 bucks an hour. That raise has not increased since 2014. That needs to increase. It needs to reflect the professionalism and the stature of her job. So Shelley actually went out and went and got a bunch of comparables for us, for local judges. I would like that to be within a comparable range of $22.9. Why? Because, number one, the job is not full-time. Therefore, that piece of it, unless it's combined with another portion, does not come with benefits. So if Beth were to leave, and somebody else were to take over that job, it would be very, very, very difficult to get somebody to do that amount of work with that kind of professionalism with budgeting, with collections, with just the finances end of it, to do that for like 15 bucks an hour. You can go down to QuickTrip, no disrespect, and make quite a bit more down there, which is a great job, too. But I believe that the $22 an hour is reflective of what we have for comparables, and I think it's a fair wage at this point. Beth has done an outstanding job getting both the SDC up running with Shelley, as well as doing the online payments, which is something we've never really been able to do, but really wanted to do. So, that's my proposal, that's what I'm asking. Court is going great, it's on the third Monday of every month. Hope I don't see you there, but I do see you there. But I appreciate the opportunity. Does anybody have any questions for me? Off the top of their head, if anybody have any questions?
That could be added to your budget.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's all I have.
I just presented.
So currently it's funded by Maisel, ourselves, any of the townships?
No.
No. Just Maisel Black Earth.
Yep, okay, just Village Maisel Black Earth. And, yeah, we made, I mean, the amount, the one big hang-up on honestly, on asking for that substantial of a raise, was getting the SDC piece up and running, right? Because we were working within a small budget coming out of COVID, and I'd really like to stay there. We don't want, we don't ask for more than we need. We're not trying to be frivolous with whatever we do, not asking for a new bench and a new gavel and things like that. Just asking for us to be taken care of and moving in the right direction. We try to make as, we try to be as efficient as we can with the equipment we've been given, or in the programs we've been given. I think we've gotten to that point, and I think Beth really deserves what that wage represents. So, that's all I got. No any questions? Again, I hope I see you, don't see you at the same time. Oh, you got a question, Beth?
So, if this is funded jointly by Black Earth, Maisel, what happens if one says, yes, they agree with it, and one says, no, they disagree with it? At what point? I mean, it's budget talk, huh?
Yeah.
I was wondering that, too. What kind of coordination do we need to do with Maisel, or is this just on us, or?
I don't think it's, I mean, I'm going to Maisel next Tuesday. So I'm going there to visit them and give them the same speech, same spiel. It's, it's, it might look like a substantial increase, but again, we've never really been able to go back and do the collections piece, which has kind of kept us at a very low level. I mean, $49,000 of the collections with about 80%, 80, 89%? 80, 89, they said, recovery rate from the SDC, which is state debt collections, which became available to us in 2018 is, will help out tremendously. For that's a little amount of the I've asked for, yes.
How many hours a month does Beth put towards the court?
15 to 20.
Okay.
15 to 20 hours.
I guess, what I'm curious is, is this a $3.50, $3.50 commitment from?
Each village.
Each village, or is, or is it, you know, I guess that's where I have questions.
And I will tell you, I met with Peter from, from Maisel, and we did have that discussion. He was looking for those comparables. He was probably scoffing just a little bit at that increase. But I don't know where they'll go, because they'll have to, obviously, with their financials.
Well, yeah, Black Earth doing their part would be extremely appreciated. I wouldn't like to look at it that way, because it's kind of a joint job. But we're also looking at moving the phone number over to Black Earth, since Beth is here anyways. Makes things a little bit easier, maybe saves a couple of dollars. That's kind of another proposal, that's kind of, well, not even a proposal, we're just gonna do it. I think that's, I think to do that piece.
So we'll talk about it at budgeting.
Yeah.
And then, by then, we'll know what Maisel's doing probably.
Yeah, yeah, I'll definitely let you guys know right after the meeting. I'll send Shelley an email. But, yeah. Otherwise, thank you all very much. Enjoy your evening, this is your friendly yearly co-equal branch of government. Take care, everybody.
I love it. Thanks, Dave.
All right, Inspector Tracy.
I'm like Judge Isaiah, I'm not going to stand. Hi, my name's Tracy Johnson, I'm your building inspector. I have been for 20 years. I worked for a couple of other firms while I was your inspector, but I had started my own business in 2011. During that time, up until now, we have handwritten every building permit to all the municipalities that I serve, which is 15. So I'm excited to tell you that as of this week, we are going to launch our online portal, which is gonna allow your residents and your contractors to apply for a permit online. We'll also be able to request an inspection online, and when that inspection is done, and the result is put into the database, they will get an email stating whether that has passed or failed. Our inspector's notes. One of the things that's gonna change for the village is, right now, we currently send you an invoice with a monthly report, and the village retains 10% of all the fees that we collect. So it's a 90-10 split. We invoice every month, and you send us a check less than 10%. This system is now going to allow as your applicants will be able to pay for a permit online through our portal. The credit card, ACH, electronic checks, that kind of payment. These applicants will also be able to fill out a paper form and actually bring a check in if they don't choose to use the online portal. There will be some people that won't use this. That being said, when that payment comes into us, it's gonna auto-generate a permit to them immediately after they pay, and it's gonna come to the village as a copy of that permit. So Shelley will get an email, or you'll have a general email box that all of our permits will go to. What that also allows is, when somebody pays a permit and we've reviewed it and issued it immediately with payment, they can start the process or their project tomorrow morning. Right now, we have this check delay, and technically you can't pull a permit and get started on one until we know that you've paid for it. So when that check goes to Milwaukee and then comes back here, you know, Shelley's girls up front have gotta tell me, hey, so-and-so came in and paid, we can let them start. So, and COVID really kind of solidified this. I mean, people want to be at home and be able to apply for a permit online now. Again, one of the changes for the, for the village is gonna be, we are now going to send you a monthly report, but we're going to send you a check. Instead of us invoicing you and you paying us, we're gonna take our fees and give you your 10% of that cut and send that with the report every month. So, this is also gonna free up some of this paperwork and headache in your front offices for all of our municipalities. They have some unruly builders that come into these offices, and nobody's gonna miss that. But that's gonna eliminate that entire process now. So you won't have to physically walk in this village to pick up a permit. You will be getting it through the online portal.
Okay, so I have questions.
Sure. I think you'll probably have a lot.
Probably, and we have a training set up Friday with the office staff to go through with it, so Tracy. One of my questions would be, will we have the ability to link our website to you for people to go right online?
Yes.
And do their permitting?
Yes, it's one of the things we would like to ask all of, all the municipalities I service. Could you please post our link on your website that's gonna show people, this is where you go to apply for a permit? There'll be options on there as well, that will be specific to the village of Black Earth. You know, certain things that you wanna add to that. And then you, as the clerk, will be able to go into that portal at any time and see those permits as well. Even though you're gonna get the written report, you'll be able to go online and see that. There'll be a clerk portal for that.
And that's right now, as they have.
We're in, we have to launch beta with, just, we chose some hand-chosen contractors to test it to make sure that they don't have any issues, and we're gonna have some hiccups to begin with. That's part of the thing, but it's right now, the process is already in place, and people are applying, and we're doing the testing.
How long before you go real live?
I would like to be live by the end of the week. But, you know, for you guys, that's one thing that you and I will have to sit down, because the monthly permits already started getting issued, which generates the invoicing thing at the end of the month. So, and I don't have a problem pushing it till October 1st because of a billing cycle thing. But people have been asking for this for a long time. You know, our bigger municipalities, you know, are going, why, why can't I apply for a permit online? Why do I gotta handwrite an application to you?
So when they, my question, we get a lot of, obviously, fence permits and whatnot, that requires a site plan, the lady loading their site plan, everything still applies, like, as is, they just have to load it up in their application?
Yeah, so what they're gonna have is an option at the bottom of the portal, when they get ready to submit, there's gonna be a button that's gonna allow them to grab building, or, you know, plans, site plans, and upload that to me for review. And that's gonna trigger an email to our system saying, Tracy, by the way, John Smith has applied for a fence permit in the village of Black Earth, that automatically comes to me. Then that, that portal is gonna allow you to grab that site plan. You can see that as well at any time. So, the process now is, we, if you go back here and look at our back office, we've got filing cabinets full of plans. And I, you have to correct me on the statute of limitations, but I think it's three or seven years on, you know, three on the plans, but I know it's seven on the application.
And lifetime, I mean.
Right. We've never thrown anything away here. In 20 years, I've, I've, there's a copy here, there's a copy in my office, there's an electronic copy, so we've got all these copies of this stuff. But the point is, is some of that stuff can go away in the paper field, because applicants want to send their, their plans and stuff electronically. And the state says, yes, going forward, we can do that now.
Would you be scanning it into the previous, into another system to hold it? To get rid of the paperwork?
Technically.
They don't need it in our paper files.
Yeah, technically those files are property of the village. So, you know, I remember the old days of Microfish or whatever. That's probably really old. There, you would have to scan all that stuff in and save it, which, you know, we have people that call in, buy a house that's 15 years old and wanna know if we still have the plan. And we do. So, I kind of like it, I'm old school that way, so this is kind of new for me, but it's the digital era, and this will make, it'll take a lot of stress off of me as well, and it'll take it off your front office, you know, and the contractors. They wanna be able to apply online. That's just kind of an overview. I'll work with Shelley on, you know, the updates to the website and stuff, but.
But you own and maintain the site, then? The village doesn't have anything to do with the domain or anything like that?
No, we own all that.
So, around the, our generation of the building permits, what kind of guardrails are in place? Like, you know, if I go in and put in, for request to put in a permit to put an outhouse in my backyard, obviously that's not something we want in the village, you know? So I would hate for that to be generated for somebody, and they start digging a hole, and then three days later, it's like, hey, you can't have that.
Okay, that's a very good point. So, every one of those applications that comes through our portal comes through me.
Okay.
Because I'm the owner, and I'm technically your chief building inspector in all these municipalities, I do have three inspectors that work for me. Those gentlemen do not process any permits. They do inspections on the site, but they don't process. I process, and then we have a secretary for our dispatch. Right now, you call into a dispatch line on a phone to get an inspection. But those come through me. So I know your, yeah, I know your ordinance, they have to be reviewed, and if there's anything on there, it gets red flagged, and you don't get to get an invite to pay for it. So I have to review that, and I say, hey, by the way, we're inviting you to pay for your permit, and, you know, and it could be declined or forced, you know.
And that's what I wanted to make sure, I wanna make sure somebody can just go put a permit in their shopping cart, check out, and start building.
No, no, the auto part will.
That's gonna be easier.
And that I have a head plan for it.
Because somebody will be calling real quick, and it'll probably be Shelley.
Yeah, okay.
So there'll be, it's not an auto-generated permit, it still goes through a plan review process. So I still need all those plans. And again, we welcome the people that don't wanna do this. I'd love everybody to do it, it would make things so much easier, but there's gonna be people that aren't going to do this. And we'll still allow, you know, version of this and check and.
I see you have down here the coming soon of the permit document upload.
Yeah, and the reason we have that coming soon with that document is, the developers are right now gonna go, how, what's, how big of a file can we allow somebody to go?
Yeah, the town plans are.
Yeah. And, you know, you take something like our new QuickTrip out here at that time, if that building comes, that's gonna be 114 sets of sheets. They're gonna figure out, what can we, what can we take and add to it? And then it's gonna get stored in a cloud, but you're gonna have access to it as a village administrator.
Some of those bigger plans are done, they're all done in AutoCAD and stuff anyway. So it's easy to just make a PDF of 114, boom.
Yeah, it's just, that's the way they, I mean, the elementary school out here, that stuff all came digital. Which, again, I'm old school, I'm used to holding a plan set and flipping through, and I still requested it. And I said, I have a paper copy, but that's me, and, but it's gonna be electronic if you apply online.
You'll see that, too, if it needs any other zoning required of it.
Yes, because right on there, the minute you choose, it's gonna default and make a mandatory field. And when you choose fence, it's gonna put right on there, site plan, all those things. So it's, it's been a work in progress, it's been a lot of work to try to get it up and running. And then when you're dealing with developers who don't do building inspection, you gotta explain it all, you know? So it's, I'm pretty excited about it, because it, the phone calls and emails from me every day with this much going on right now is, it's good to be busy, but.
Budgeting will look a little different for those categories.
Yeah, so you'll be retaining, that, you guys will be retaining your 90-10 split. That doesn't change.
Like a winter, outside.
Yeah.
So there's, this really has nothing to do with that, but as we're on the subject.
Sure.
Can you do a comparison for us on permit fees and stuff, to make sure we're in line with other people?
Yep.
Because I think we need to look at that going forward.
Yeah, we haven't had a fee, I don't think your village has had a fee increase from Shelley.
2018 and the last one.
So it's, and when we do a fee increase, it's not, you know, it's not a huge jump, but across the board, it helps. But you retain that 10%, so the more they increase, obviously, the more you retain for your process. And I would like to get, you know, I have from Richland Center all the way to the Town of Middleton. I mean, there's 15 of them, which seems like a lot, but when things kind of go like this, you need that many to stay busy. So I would like to get our fee schedules in line, just about everybody the same, because our contractors go, hey, you know what, I'm working in Black Earth, and your fee is this much, but I go over there to Cross Plains, and they're completely different. It's harder for them to budget.
That's kind of what they're asking, yeah.
It'd be nice to get everybody on the same page, you know? So, and that's something.
We compare.
Yeah, I would like to get to you this fall, and then maybe the first of the year, look at, here's what we're having going forward.
Perfect.
And there's no, no issue with money going through Johnson Inspection then to us versus vice versa the other way?
No, I mean, just proceed and then.
No, I mean, the minute, the minute somebody applies for a permit and I approve it and invite them to pay, you are gonna get that copy of that same permit instant. There's no modifying the fee once they've paid.
Because I don't wanna record, I mean, when it comes into us, I'll probably record it, the revenue in for so-and-so, and then probably, that's our book, so that we know who it was or the address.
Because now you're probably showing it as an income as a full amount, less the 10% back to us. So, you know, technically, there are fees, we're sharing the 10% with you as the 90-10 split.
And on the expense side, to Tracy, there'll be the expense, obviously, until they're 100% going to you. What do you do?
Yeah. And for a lot of our municipalities, you know, there's clerks and stuff that are part-time in these townships. We don't, I don't know if a check has been sent to them and when they've paid, because he or she may not get in that office for three or four days, and I'm hanging out to this, and the contractor's going, hey, I need to start, you know? But you technically can't start until we know you've paid. And you will always have the authority to ask for an audit. If you don't, I mean, with the monthly report, you're gonna see it anyway, but you could ask for that audit. You know, you're always welcome to say, let us look at exactly in Black Earth, what's been collected, what's being paid out. And you're gonna see it every month, but I have no problem with you asking for that.
That's something we could have every month, here?
Yeah, and you will get it every month, no matter what, whether Shelley wants it.
So I have it every month here. I mean, if you wanted to see for the bills to be paid tonight, I have all this detail, at any time, those are all here.
Yeah, what changes is, it just does a 360, and goes, now, we're gonna send you a check every month.
Yeah.
Instead, and the best way to do that is, that allows us to electronically, electronically post their payments and their permits immediately. You know, we've looked at trying to pull them out of that portal, taking them to the village portal, letting them pay, and it's, it's so much going back and forth that I think people would go, yeah, just give me the paper copy. No, we don't wanna do that. Anyway, so that's what's new and exciting.
Yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't need an action, but, no, that, yeah, we don't, no.
It's happening.
Thank you. It's happening. It's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
All right, item C, discussion action on plan commission recommendations. Let's just talk about it one by one, then we can decide if we're gonna do it all as one motion or approve or do individual. So I, the rezoning of the Black Earth Elementary School, that was Conservancy, right? And it would be, it was recommended to make it general commercial, B1. It was the ought contingent on rezoning for an antique mall. Next item is the Siemens, Seaman Trust property. There's five acres across from the cemetery, behind Al's house. Okay, yeah. That, they recommended rezoning for residential from Conservancy and Al.
Four bedroom, three bath house?
Yeah, four bedroom, three bath house in Shep.
Yep.
The, the precision toying portion was, they're having problems with lot line discussion and things like that. So they would like to move the fence to the lot line and make it an eight-foot fence instead of a six, solid metal, painted, galvanized. And. To the lot line in dispute? Yeah. To the lot line. In dispute, yeah. In dispute, but where it ain't gonna be disputed if it's not corrected the other way. It does change it towards his property six feet, five something, five something. Towards toying, because there's a six foot in front of this, where the fence would go, that's in dispute, so.
And that's all on the backside, south side of the property?
Yeah, that faces the White House up center. And then the other one was the Black Earth Lanes and work of Gardens, Deer Garden Fence, patio and sidewalk, which was recommended approval, it's a wrought iron fence. I don't know, they have the details of it or not?
They have.
Okay, no, the benefit, but we actually have pictures and stuff.
No, I didn't.
And it was, it was recommended to approve. So I'll take questions and stuff on it, and should, you wanna vote on it, individual items, or do you wanna do it as one?
I think we can do it as one, because the planning permission already.
I think so, too, but. Is that a motion, Ken?
So the re. What are you looking for a motion for?
On all.
The recommendations from the Plan Commission for all these properties.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, so the schooling.
Yep.
You said something, what about the, the back two lots?
What?
The, the south two lots?
South two lot.
Yeah, are we counting that as?
Where rezoning, everything, right?
Okay.
All things.
And we want those other two lots to be, or commercial, not?
Well, some of those floodplain, they're not gonna be allowed.
No, the two on Park Street.
That's floodplain.
So we want a business?
That's a floodplain, too.
There.
I don't think he knows what it wants to do with that yet, and at the point.
I know, but do we want it residential, or do you want a business going?
But isn't it all the same property?
It is all the same property.
Well, they're, they're split.
It's a contingent on property sale.
There's a small strip.
Well, they're, they're split, there's, because there's two lots there on the south side, so.
No.
But people own that, yeah.
It's all up in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but do we want a business going on Park Street? Park Streets are ready to, not full street. And do you want cars pointing in and out of there if there was a business there?
What are the two lots? But that would have to all get approved anyway, so I mean, they would have to come back and say, okay, now we wanna put.
Well, they can put whatever they want if it's general.
No, no.
They have a list of stuff they can put, they can put everything, but they could put something there.
I don't think it's fair to tell somebody that's buying a piece of property that half of it can be used for this and half of it can be used for that.
Yeah.
When it's, when it's different, in different areas.
But they're all the same.
It's the same property.
It's all the same, not, not a split property.
Okay. More discussion? Go in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes? All right, discussion action on refuse recycling, RFPs from last time. Last time was equal, now it, it won't be equal this time. So I, I guess, what? Where were you fitting into this?
My discussion was having to do with the amount that we charge the village residents. Based on an article that was in the last comparing state and municipal revenue sources. We have an opportunity. We have an opportunity, and we, as we all know, um, state determines how much we get, and funding levels for state programs, other than general transportation, they've been cut, are stagnant over the last decade. We have a window here where, if you see the insert, inside, and this is not the, this is the plan that I would like to see, but we'll vote on that, but whatever plan we pick, if we set the rate at fifteen dollars, we have a chance to dr- On this particular bid, which would be automated pickup from Town and Country was what I used, but over the course of eight years, that's just a sample piece, but we need to start looking for revenue streams, because I am not counting on the state to be coming through anytime soon. And that's what the total would be over, and of course, it's diminishing, but the rates would never change on the recycling, for seven years, it'd be at fifteen dollars. But the village would stand to collect about eighty-five thousand dollars a year in revenue, that we could put towards capital expenses like trucks.
Over the seven?
Over the seven years, right. So, if you break it down, this is, the bottom part is what you'd rake in every year.
So, while we're thinking about that, we still have to discuss how we want pickup in.
I agree, and, like I say, that was just an example, using that one.
Yep.
I'm gonna say just fifteen and crossboard regardless of.
Regardless of which one we take.
So, you know, it's a, it's, I look at it two ways. I do not like to create a revenue stream that's, people don't know exactly what it's for, and you can use it for whatever you want. I, I, just not a fan of that, never have been, right?
That's why I said capital improvements.
Yeah, well.
That's pretty much anything.
And it's the same thing.
It's not general fund.
Well, no, no, but it, it, uh, but, in the same, in the same thought, I have the thought, well, the state limits us on what we can raise our budget for, so how do we ever get ahead? I'm kinda, I'm really tossed up on it, I don't know how I think about it, to tell you the truth.
I would, I would like to, if, if we do a real, like what Scott's saying, to be more specific, I would say, to use for road maintenance, chip ceiling, you know, chip ceiling budget each year, or something like that.
Oh, and that's, the problem that I had when I did this was I thought, we need to direct it towards something specific, so that the taxpayers know that that's where the money is being spent, so that's all open to discussion.
Yeah.
It's just that we have this opportunity.
I, I don't even agree with that, but what it is, is the taxpayers think it's being paid for refuge, and it's really not, cause that's what we're billing it at.
Well, I think we pay for power too, but.
Yeah.
You know.
Uh, comments? Do the village get any comments?
Oh, yeah.
You, you put it in the thing and.
Definitely. Um, all right, I'll start with the easy ones first. Somebody sent us in with their utility bill, the newsletter that we had, and no carts, please. They're too restrictive on how much goes in carts. So, we put that one aside. Um, this one, they are in favor of switching over to garbage recycling carts instead of keeping the same system due to the small recycling bucket. They don't hold a lot of items, they may blow out on a windy day. Also, one very large garbage cart will hold more instead of using two or three garbage cans, depending on how much trash people have to throw out, so please consider the new garbage recycling cart, and.
Residents can request a second recycling bin, right?
Yeah.
For a fee for twenty-five or thirty-seven dollars, right?
They question months, it, that just means.
Is it per, is it per month or?
It's a ten dollar fee for an extra recycle bin.
Is that per month, or is that just?
No, that's for ours now.
In the, in the.
Yeah, for ours now.
In the collection, if you want the containers, you can pay for an extra container, but then there's a surge charge every month, too.
Yeah, there's that.
It's not.
But, but right now, if we wanted a second container.
One time fee.
It's a one time fee.
You have ten dollars.
Or you can use a few.
And, it don't matter if you put off fifteen bags of garbage if you had a big family gathering, the next one will.
Well, I know, I take advantage of that.
I know, right?
Here, uh, here's another comment. I live in the village and wanted to express my thoughts about the garbage recycling contract. Sock City opted with Town and Country for the new bins. The bins are ninety-five gallon and giant, my daddy lives in Sock. He's ninety-three, could manage his one bag of garbage and small bag of recycling every week with his walker. And calling Town and Country in October, as instructed, to change his ninety-five gallon bin down to sixty-five gallons. He will no longer be able to manage his garbage since he cannot handle any of those large bins. He will have to rely on someone coming to do it for him. He also has nowhere to store the bins. I live by myself and usually have one bag of garbage and sometimes fill my blue recycle bin. I also have nowhere to store the giant bins. I would like the village forward to take into consideration the elderly folks and the decisions. I am not sure that getting those bins to the end of the driveway, especially in winter, will be an easy task for anyone, much less the older folks. I myself would like things as they are. Okay, there's that. And, uh, we've had complaints about our current service. About two weeks ago, we had quite a situation and plenty of, uh, phone calls here that day about garbages being missed, and of course, over the year, I told you even last month, uh, we've gotten several complaints about the way they've been handling the, uh, containers. After they picked up, they're tossing them around and getting thrown.
Like, you know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, mine are all broken.
The recycle guys are really, compared to the garbage.
And, um, one in a multiple living unit, uh, he was told Town and Country won't pick up more than two bags of garbage per resident. Other one, garbage wasn't dumped two weeks in a row, he has complained, recycling has gotten us a few. Last month, another one.
Look back at the.
With the, with the trash that's not dumped, I would be curious to know if there's an outstanding reason for that.
Yeah, exactly.
If you put a sack of concrete in your trash bin.
Uh-huh.
It can't be lifted, or if there's nails protruding all over, like if it's unsafe or overweight, there, there are issues there.
Two Fridays ago, it, it's just been sporadic throughout the village, and there were several calls that came in that same day from different, of, of the garbage of getting missed, missed or recyclable. Uh, I know bathroom, I ended up calling Town and Country to see if someone was coming back, cause I don't know if they had a different crew.
Couldn't do.
Or what, and it was spread, so the garbage was being missed, or some of the recyclables were being, yeah.
You can see people put them out late too, and then the garbage sits there for the entire week.
Yeah.
You know, that happens a lot too, so it's being interesting to.
So, I, my question is, I, I've complained to Town and Country before. But, my question is, throughout the year, how many complaints do we get? And this is one, instance that there was a few, but is that a regular thing throughout the whole year?
I'm gonna guess telling you that probably at least once a month we're getting a complaint.
And they call you if they miss the trash?
What's that?
They call the village if they miss.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
See, I just, Town and Country, and they, they come right back, it's like.
Hopeful that we, and, and on some occasions, Town and Country have sent someone back out, but if they can't, if they don't have a driver available, they won't, they'll just say it's not gonna get picked up.
Hmm. I've called into office, because the ridiculousness of the situation that happened, uh, I felt the office should know about it, you know, uh, so, I can see.
I've called and complained to them.
Yeah.
Well, I got pictures on my phone too, but I didn't call anybody, but.
And I will say, Town and Country is just dumping all their recycling into the back of a, a dump truck, and I don't care if they say they're sorting it out.
What do you think they're gonna do?
They're not sorting it out.
Automated. And all dumps in the back of the truck, and then they sort it out later.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess that's fair too, but, you know, it's.
So, I checked into this once, and, because they were coming and picking everything up, the problem is, they were using two different trucks. They booked a link, but there was two different trucks. It wasn't a trailer then, it was actually a, a truck.
Yeah, they have two different, they have two different crews, but like, when you, and I think you got a good point there, um, when you throw all that recycling into the back of the truck, well, now that cardboard's got all the leftover waters and water on there and deteriorate, so that's not getting recycled, right? Like, the plastic mixes together, that's not getting recycled.
Recycle very little.
I was gonna say, do you know how much of the res- the plastic they actually recycle?
One, two, and seven.
Cause the containers do not.
One, two, and seven, I don't know.
Containers don't actually get recycled.
Yep.
And do we only have?
Representative right here, Scott, right, tell us.
There you go.
Mine hot tea?
I think I heard, oh, you got called it out.
Do we only have one choice of bin size too?
No, there's smaller bins.
I talked to a few of the residents in Sock, and they are not given an option. They have the largest bin per household, and they were, cause they called and wanted a smaller, and they're like, there's no option.
Are you from Town and Country?
And I forget.
I'm a Pelletary weight system.
Okay. And I, I forget if it was, so you're not.
Yeah.
Not yet.
I think, I think it was the Pelletary rep last time did say that if there is an elderly person who can't move the bin.
That they could be waiting where they walk out to it.
They can get on the, they can get on the regular list where the person gets out, wheel, it just has to be visible from the road, and then they have to sign a waiver saying, yes, you're allowed to come on my property.
Yeah.
And they'll wheel it, and I feel like, I don't know, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's something that Town and Country, I think it was Pelletary.
Yeah, you might, you might say in that, yeah.
Pelletary.
Yeah.
The other thing is the size, they're not happy with how big, not fitting in any of, they don't know what to do with them.
Yeah, people with small, single car detached rides.
Like the condos here, so, fifty-five and older condos, they don't have, I mean, they have garage space, but it's a very small garage.
They don't have any space for those, and there's no space on the side, really.
Yeah.
And they're, and for them to move it out is, yeah.
They don't have any space on the side.
It could be, it could be on their front door.
Yeah.
Well, I wonder how long your vehicle keep a labor pool, cause it's labor intensive the way it is right now.
They don't know.
Yeah, that was my concern last time. I like, I like the personal pickup, um, the ability to.
Mike, you said.
Once every three, once.
I'm gonna run the petitions up to the town of Middleton, and then I'll be back.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Um, I like the once every three, being able to just, oh, put some extra trash and not have to call and say, there's gonna, okay, I'm gonna pay my three twenty-five for an extra pickup, um, personally. But I also have that fear, like, what happens if three years on the road, they just can't, the label's on the contract?
They come, they, they, we just, we have to go pay out the.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, their crews change in weekly. I mean, before, it was, I knew every single person that was coming to pick it up, and now it's a, a new, new set of faces every time.
We lost our driver.
He went to recycling.
Yeah.
He went to recycling.
So, we're going with it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Hi, Danielle Pelletary with Pelletary Weight Systems, and one of the family business owners. Um, my brothers and I are in the business, we grew up in the business, toys from Lanto and all the rest. Watched mom and dad start from the ground up in seventy-nine, um, so we kinda live and breathe this, this is exciting for us. Uh, we've been very successful with the automated collection systems, which we've never been in the residential side of the business until there was automated cart services, because of the workers comp exposure, cause manual pickup, you have a lot of injuries. Um, not to mention every time somebody gets out of the truck, you know, it, it depends on what street it is and how busy, but you're taking a risk of, of an injury and somebody getting hit. Um, so, once automated systems had proven themselves to be a good option for residents and municipalities, that's when we got into the business, and our first customer was the Village of Brooklyn. Um, to date, uh, we've got about sixty-five thousand homes that we service. We're getting a hundred thousand cart pickups all over southern Wisconsin on a weekly basis. Um, and I, I think that there's a lot, I, the comments that I'm hearing and the concerns and the questions, these are all things that, um, you'd expect when you're going from a manual to an automated system. So, manual collection, um, is kind of the same in the past, you don't really see anybody doing it anymore, because of the, um, liability, quite frankly, and, and the labor that's needed to do it. So, with the automated cart system, there was a couple of things that were mentioned. First of all, what if the cart is, I want a smaller cart? We offer, um, if, if we were chosen as a provider, we do a mailer, we handle that, we get the addresses, um, from Shelley, we mail out a, it's all in the packet that we provided, we mail out a cart order form. The standard would be ninety-five, but anybody would have the option to go with a smaller cart. We collect those, we order them, when we do the deliveries, you can pick a smaller cart if you want one. Um, we do offer an additional cart, if you have extras, if you're gonna consistently have extras, that's ninety-nine dollars a year, you pay us directly for that, and you can have that. I think that would maybe be cheaper than what they're doing right now, cause it's ten dollars a month, I'm not sure what your current system is. Um, handicapped and elderly, the, um, we do have a cart rollout system with a, a handicap application, so if there is a medical need or an elderly person that is concerned about slip and fall in the winters, or they just can't manage to get the cart down to the bottom of the driveway, um, there's an application they send in, and we've mirrored it after the city of Madison, they have the same system. They send it in, they do, we do ask, their doctor says, yeah, they need this support service, just can't have, you know, ten thousand people doing this. And then our drivers, long as the cart's visible, we don't have to go in the garage, if it's outside, we will take it, bring it down for service, and then bring it back up to the resident's garage or wherever it's keeping it. Um.
And what is the fee for that?
There is no fee if you are truly elderly or disabled, and you just have to do the application.
Okay, all right.
And it's really, we're pretty reasonable, like, you know, if somebody's ninety-five, and they don't know how to submit something with an email, and mail them the application, and they have somebody help them fill it out, um, you know, we can work with the, the village if they're like, hey, this person needs this, and I don't want them to have to go through this check and balance. It's just, there has to be something in place, so it's not everybody like, I'd like my cart brought down in the winter, you know?
Okay.
Um, so that's an option. We do offer the smaller bin size, um, we have the elderly handicap rollout, um, ease of use, you know, it's pretty amazing, actually. As much as you'd think that, you know, the cart is more difficult, um, it's pretty easy to use. We do this in all the municipalities, and I find that people are actually, um, realize once they start using it, it's actually very easy to kinda wheel around and tote around, it's maybe even easier than, than a couple of different bags and, and all the rest. Um, and we'd be always happy to drop off, you know, if you don't know, we're happy to drop off samples, but we do if we, um, were awarded the bin, we bring all sample cart sizes. We stage them with signage for village residents to come, play with them, roll around, see what size you wanna get before the, um, the order needs to be put in, um, as part of our, our services. Um, additionally, I wanted to mention, there was a couple of other things brought up. We have eight, currently eight customer service people on our team, um, that's one of the departments that I oversee. Excellent, 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 wonderful people, um, couldn't do as good of a job as we do without them, and that means when your residents call, we want the call. We don't want Shelley to get the call, we want the residents to call us if they have questions about recycling, what they can recycle, when we're coming, can you get me a calendar, this, that, and the other. If there's a concern of, of mis- miscollection or perceived miscollection, and we have GPS and, um, cameras on all of our vehicles, we can research it, figure it out. If we miss something, then we'll be back, that's part of what, what our guarantee is. Um, sometimes, let's say, all the drivers are home for the night, and we can't come back, and we, you know, we get a data, research it, pull the videos, check the GPS, if we missed it, then we're coming back to get it. Um, but our customer service, I mean, that's really the question is, if you want customer service and you want your residents to have great answers and information about what they need, or something else they wanna recycle or get rid of, we are the supplier of choice. We've had multiple municipalities that have lower bids, have different options over the last few years, the city of Fitchburg, city of Sun Prairie, yada, yada, and they have chosen to continue to work with us. We're still competitively priced, we're not always the low ball guy, you know, those people that come out of Chicago and all the rest, they have a better price. Um, but, at the end of the day, we are guaranteeing that the materials that we're taking are actually getting recycled. We have a fully automated MRF that we've built, so that we, um, can have better control over that. We have a video that we've published, we have twenty recycling tips online. We continue to do new, um, recycling tips all the time, that we're pushing out to residents, so they know what is recyclable and how to best prepare materials for recyclable. We host tours for Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, you know, the schools, everybody at the MRF, the kids and the adults, and anybody interested can come and see what actually happens through the recycling. Um, so those are some of the things I wanted to just mention, is that, those are things that we do offer, and that's part of, um, the things that are important to us. Make sure that not only are, we're giving great customer service when there's a customer concern or a question, we support the village staff, they're, you know, we want to get the calls, you're there, you'll have immediate answers. If not, within an hour or two, same day, or within twenty-four hours, if there's something that's a question, um, so that, that's some of what I've heard, we talked about the workers comp. You know, one of the things that I, I, I am also aware of is like, hey, yeah, you had a big party this weekend, you got extra stuff that doesn't fit in the cart. Maybe you don't wanna have a second cart laying around, because you don't have anywhere to store it. I have our services, I'm friends with my neighbor, hey, I got an extra bag, can I put it in your cart? No problem, you know, I mean, there are creative solutions to that, you know, when there is extra stuff, but if you don't have a friendly neighbor, you can call and pay for extra bags on the side. Um, so, if it becomes a consistent need, people will have an extra cart to have the storage for it and pay the annual fee for those. So, those are some of the things that, that I would just bring up in regards to that concern. Um, when it comes to storing the carts, I do understand there are gonna be some specific people that don't have room to put them in their garage. Um, in areas that we see, you know, people will store them on the side, or in the back, or in a different kind of spot. I've actually seen, a lot of people, you know, kinda build a little, almost like the bus shelter for the kids, you know, where they decide, especially if they have a long drive, where they just keep them down at the end of the driveway, and they put up a little structure as approved by the village, um, to shield the carts if you don't wanna see them. Um, we don't run into too many, we don't have any complaints from residents about, I don't have anywhere to put the cart. We don't get that, and whether the village or the city does, I don't hear that kind of feedback.
If, if, if there's a smaller cart option, I mean.
That would be helpful.
Then that would be helpful, but you, right now, they have to put their trash somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Right, unless they literally are generating one, one bag per week. Right, unless they literally are generating one, one bag per week and they just take it from the kitchen.
Some people that store that bag of garbage in their garage.
Yeah, I was gonna say sometimes.
There's plenty of people in villages that don't need garbage cans, yeah.
I mean, I think there's actually an ordinance that says you have to put it in a garbage can to keep the, uh, keep the.
Oh, that's not forced if it is.
No. I would just say, I don't think, I think you have to.
I might think, I might think.
You can't use your cans there, they can't sit there for, I mean, it's supposed to be like.
Yeah.
Alright.
And, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Can you have the lids open and stuff out?
We, we prefer the lids closed, um, that keeps down.
What I mean is it's full?
If it's full and the lids are propped open, what you have to remember is when the carts are coming to, when the, the operator's coming, depending on whether it's a cradle can or a side door, if the carts are popped all the way open and there's stuff that's on top, it can impede the dumping of that cart.
Okay, so you can't.
So we like the lids to be closed. Now, do we dump them with lids half open? Yes. But what happens is you could end up with litter and windblown debris. So we want the lids to be closed the best that you can so that you don't have that issue once the cart's been dumped.
Is there a certain way?
Uh, that's a question.
Because, I mean, if you have a ton of stuff and you, that's what you probably don't.
You should help it down, do you?
Well, yeah, I mean, how, how full can it be?
If the cart can't be lifted, then my operator's gonna take it and you're gonna get annoyed, saying, I can't actually physically lift the cart.
Well, but they don't.
But they're not.
It's automated, so, so how do you know how much you can have in here?
There's probably no weight limit unless it's something that the.
Because the hydrologist can't lift it, then we'll take it.
You're just.
I think, I think.
It works, it works with this stuff and they take it now and we can't take.
We have that work.
I think, I think those bins, at least the ones that I think I've seen in the past, there's a weight limit right on it, it's like, no more than ninety-five pounds, no, how do you know how much ninety-five pounds is?
I was just wondering.
We have that in our commercial building.
Yeah.
And truck does not have a problem picking up and handling that stuff.
Yeah. I think, I think the weight limit is probably based on the engineered plastic capacity weight, capacity of the container before the hydraulic.
It would break down before that could lift it. The truck's doing it.
Right, right, I, I think you break the cart, yeah.
So it's why.
It's a classic lift, it's up in the bottom.
Uh, the replacement cart cost, I believe, is, um, well, whatever the market value is right now, so I want to say, if you break it, it's your fault, then I think they're around sixty-eight bucks right now.
What if your truck breaks it?
If truck.
On video, on video.
I said, if you decide, yeah, to run over it for fun, you know?
And your cart.
If you break it, then if you call, well, hey, you know, I kind of messed around and lit it on fire and it's, it's on fire with it, then you're gonna have to replace it. And that would be a certain market cost, and if, if you're gonna have us deliver it to you, there will be a delivery fee for that. If you bring it to our office or you come pick up your new car from the office, then it would be an additional cost.
How often do you replace the cart?
How often do I?
How often do you replace them?
Very rarely.
They're not unlike a regular.
No, no, they, they can get damaged, there is that, that potential, but I would say.
They're pretty heavy.
It's very rare, very rare, they're very durable, they're, they're, the rigid plastic is very durable. And the, the manufacturers have figured out the secret sauce with that, they don't break easily, I mean, these things should be good. Their manufacturer warranty, I want to say, is, is at least a few years and we've seen them going for well over twenty.
So when they do wear a hole in stuff or wheels break, do you guys break like that?
Like normal wear.
Yeah, yeah, and they, when your resident calls us, or if they come in and tell Shelley when they're paying something, hey, call Pelletary, they'll take care of it. Um, some cities have been able with these automated dumping to be able to just say, you don't need to use plastic bags anymore, just take your trash, throw it in that, or is that something that these would allow?
There's a recycling tip on our website on that, so there's two sides to this point. Number one, the, the plastic bags in the recycling center gums up the machine, because everything's sorted by size and dimension and things have to get torn apart. We have a pre-sort line with manual workers tearing open bags to make sure that we don't gum things up. And we, we keep adding to the recycling center investment to make sure that things are working properly. So, the plastic bags, we don't like them on the MRF side, on the recycling side, but on the collector's side, it keeps down the windblown debris if it's a windy day.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's one of those where if I was only in the recycling, I'd say, yeah, no plastic bags, but I'm also a collector and a hauler and I want to make sure that we don't have crap laying all over. And if, 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 when the guy's dumping it, he sees stuff blow, he is getting out of the truck and he's picking the stuff up. So, it's, it's up to the residents, it's, it's.
Yeah.
We do accept them, we accept the recyc, we accept the plastic bags in both the trash and recycling.
Recyclable, no.
Some of the national competitors do not accept plastic bags anymore in the recycling.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. What are you saying? What? Somebody want to make a motion?
A list of what was the price difference?
Who do you want to hear tonight?
What is that, what is, what do you want to do? You just want to?
Well, I, I'd like to get this done.
Are we giving a company?
I am terribly into this.
Same stuff up.
Are we just talking about going automated or are we talking, because Town and Country doesn't even have that option, right?
Yeah, Town and Country offered both.
Yeah, they do the same thing, yeah, okay.
Town and Country offered both, Pelletary did not offer the manual because of the workers' comp.
Right, okay, there you go, thank you, thank you.
So I, go ahead.
What you want us to do is you want us to pick a company tonight, right, that's what you're going at?
And an option.
The, the, sorry, are these prices still from, still old trees?
They, they, they own, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, uh, just randomly here, so there's option two, five years, fifteen ninety for a month.
Yeah.
That's over the five years or is that?
It's progressive, right?
So then we'll add another twenty-five cents year after year?
Um, I thought it was broke down.
Or don't start, yeah, that's what I was trying to.
It's broke down year by year, what it goes up to.
Okay. Not looking at the right page, right?
Yeah.
Well, personally.
I think Town and Country with the manual pickup still is the best option for, for me and the people I talk to.
Is that a motion?
Look at it from a fiscal standpoint, your best deal out there is the one pass program by Town and Country. I'm gonna hear something from Town and Country.
That's only given you.
Seven, isn't it?
Well, they were here before I came aboard.
Yeah, they've been here.
Oh, how long have they been here?
They've been here.
Well, two thousand fourteen. They were here, yeah.
I don't know if that.
It was a ninety-five gallon deal.
Their, uh, two thousand fourteen, their price for us was still the eleven dollars that they're charging us now, right, is that what you said?
Well, that was a progressive over the years.
Yeah, it is a progressive over the years. Started at, uh, what, ten? Seven years, they went to eleven, so fifty cents in seven years, they changed.
So, I think we either entertain a motion or move on.
Trying to compare the seven year versus.
I would make motion that Town and Country do a manual pickup for seven years.
For a second?
Hearing no second, I'd make a motion, we do the one pass program proposal from Town and Country for seven years.
Second.
Oh, he said, he said manual.
He said manual, I said auto.
Okay.
They'll look at, one's only given.
Is there a second before we have discussion?
Are you seconding it?
I'll second it, yes, right.
All right, now we'll open it for discussion.
So what do you do about the bins that the people can't? Yeah, because they're all elderly.
So Town and Country's not offering sizes?
No, I think I was just saying, Town and Country automated, they're only getting every other recyclable person.
No, it's every.
Not with the automated.
Shelley?
Not.
Oh, manual is every week.
Manual would be every week.
Yeah.
What is, what was our garbage rate per month and recycle rate per month before this?
Uh.
Seven fifteen three.
Seven fifteen is garbage per month and recyclables is three fifteen.
All right, any more discussion?
Scott, I'm saying to Town and Country, I'm sorry, your customer service sucks.
Yeah.
They sure do. Their shit is all over my yard, even made a pullout, I don't know if it's my shit or someone else's shit, it's in my yard.
Right, I agree.
Scott, to, to your point about just saying that, to, and, and maybe I'm missing something in your assessment of the one pass program being the physically best option.
That's what I go with you.
Is, I'm just looking at a seven year limit, you know, only being able to count on this to seven years versus being able to plan for ten years out.
Mm-hmm.
And looking at, compared to what we're paying now, to what the rate increase we're gonna end up looking at if we went with the seven year plan?
I guess I'm pretty.
Well, we're gonna start with a fifteen dollar ninety cent a month charge.
There's no option for our elderly or even size at Town and Country.
Right, Town and Country.
Yeah.
For instance.
Just throw it out there, they haven't been here for either of the meetings to discuss this.
Exactly, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, so we should, we should be more.
That's true. Let's go ahead and vote on the motion that's on there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, all in favor of, of a motion for Town and Country automated, um, single pass with every other week? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can you make a motion?
Anybody else want to make a motion and put this all ahead?
We can't.
Amy, how many opposed?
Oh, my real.
Nobody is saying.
I make a motion to change completely and go Pelletary. On her, what is that, what was that paper? Do you have it from last week or the last meeting?
Yeah.
Didn't they have a ten year plan, right?
They have a five and a ten year.
Yeah, as long as they guarantee that they will give, uh, the option of cart sizes to our elderly, I just say, well.
So are you looking at the five or the ten year?
I like the ten year.
And do you want every week recycled or every other week recycled?
I personally don't care, so that's open to, you know, because I like, I like to get the stuff out of my garage, so I recycle weekly.
I can't imagine that.
I can't imagine if I'm on any left in mine.
What a two week. I can't imagine what a two week would look like.
I was, okay, it's nice, just talked me right into it, with the weekly recycle.
Weekly recycle.
So what's the motion?
To go with Pelletary for the ten year, what, we have.
Weekly.
Weekly recycle and making sure that there's, that the people are given size sizes.
And the elderly.
Elder, somebody, yeah, they have to have size sizes.
Can somebody, can I up that number?
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Now discussion.
Okay, and so going ten year up, we get the, the village dumpsters as well.
Yeah.
And then there's, I don't know if anyone saw, but also offer twenty-five cents per pound for hauling for e-waste? I don't believe Town and Country offers that.
No, we've had to contract out for e-recycling every year.
That might, that out there as well, that's not part of this discussion, but.
They pay what?
Uh, they have an e-waste program.
E-recycling, every year we have that e-recycling event that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had to hire that out separately.
I'd rather store my e-waste here than at my house, though.
So what's this price, what's the price on that then?
Twenty-five cents per pound for hauling.
On Pelletary for the ten year.
Ten years.
With weekly trash and recycling.
Starts out at fourteen sixty-five and it goes up to nineteen fifty in ten years progressively. Every other week, every other week recycling was only sixteen forty.
And that, that, so that's three sixty-five, three dollars and sixty-five cents, or from our current eleven dollars a month.
Yeah, but it's already, it's a, yeah.
It's on up anyways to at least, uh.
Yeah.
Well, no, it's not, it's, first year's still the eleven dollars, isn't it?
No, no, no.
Fourteen sixty-five.
Fourteen.
Yeah, and I'm on the same page.
I'm trading.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think with the larger bins, ninety-five gallon bin, like, chance of filling that up in a week with recycling? Yeah.
That can be very easy.
Every other week?
Yeah, we have two bins out all the time.
Right, for online trappers and stuff, you get the cardboard and all that.
Yeah, these are ninety-five gallon recycle bins.
Right, the other ones right now.
The other one, they're little boxes, they're like twelve.
Yeah, but if you can't fit in, if you have two.
You gotta cut back on drinking.
Two bins. I would never recycle my cans.
You, you could get four bins in an ninety-five ton, easily, for recycling bins.
And as far as recycling, in theory, you know, it should be clean stuff that's going in there, it shouldn't be like a soup can full of soup, right?
Because I always.
You're just putting good stuff up.
Right, so like. I, I know that the motion is for every week, but I'd like to go to every other week recycling, just to say a little. Personally.
On recycling?
On recycling. That's where you got one bearing every week taken out and two bearings every other week.
And that would drop it to the twelve eighty for ten.
And that would have to go.
Which we can.
Twelve eighty.
Okay, I'll then, fine. I'll then, fine.
Residents, residents, we're opposed to every week.
Recycling every other week.
Okay, okay.
Do you want me to start over?
Yeah, just making a amendment, yeah.
My new, um, my new motion would be to go with Pelletary for ten years, recycling every other week, garbage every week, with people having the option of sizes, and wasn't there something else they were taking? Yeah.
Elderly?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, because, you know, what if, what if we have a person here in town that has, you know?
Okay, handicapped.
Okay, I got the motion.
Who has seconded it? Do you want to amend their second?
I'll second.
Or amend your second?
I am, yeah.
Any more discussion?
I got one question.
It's not just.
It's a, okay.
So I need one more, uh, dumpster down at my public workshop, is that gonna be a cost or not?
An additional dumpster?
Yes, because we, we currently have a, um, one for trash.
You're on the hot seat now.
Two yard for recyclables, for cardboard and stuff like that.
What was in the bid, you know? It was, um.
It was just for the one six yard.
Recycling, it's up to current container sizes and frequency of service at Village Garage, Veterans Park and Village Hall.
From the current. But you have two down there, right?
You have two down there, I don't know why, I never got it.
They could put a bigger one and not set it two.
What's that?
They could put a bigger.
No, one was for cardboard recyclables, one was for.
But if you need one that's bigger for the garbage, they could put a bigger one for the garbage down there, wouldn't have to put a whole lot of them.
There's only one down there, though.
Gotcha.
Well, there was two.
No, there's two down there.
Well, there's two now, but.
There's only. No, I don't know why, we've been filling it up.
But anyways, so.
I thought the bin was only for one.
It's for one, I don't know why, I make.
Yeah, so they're.
It's current.
Current container sizes.
It's no more than what they have right there now, they were gonna match it, that's what we had.
Close the sale, dude. Close the sale, tell them they can have what they want.
All right, so we got a motion and a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for answering the question.
Can I make one more comment, too?
Yeah.
You have eighteen months to make changes, if you want to go to weekly recycling, you can do that. So if you decide you want to go to weekly recycling, we'll honor the rate for the next eighteen months to make that change. I think that once everybody's accustomed to the new service, you'll know whether or not that's necessary or not.
Yeah. And you're gonna do like.
I gotta tell you, I've been on the board a little while and I've been on the board before, this is the hardest thing I've ever done.
Now, maybe, you better get those snowbanks cleared out along the road.
Yeah, you're gonna submit a lot more room.
So, so we have eighteen months.
I need my own back, yeah.
No more paddles down the border.
Never mind, I've got it, you got it?
All right.
That way.
Okay.
Give me a question.
I do, wait a minute, before we move on, so Danielle, our current contract does not end until the end of this year, correct? So I think you're up for that, I guess, I think we, uh, we think about changing and transitioning and notifying people.
Do you have a payment right here?
How can you help with that?
I couldn't find it either.
We have done this more than two dozen times.
I know, I have one too, I just can't find it.
We're gonna email you with the next steps, but the residents, like, we'll, we'll get in touch with you, we need a database of the residents with their mailing addresses. We'll develop a cart order flyer that'll, that we're gonna, we're gonna mail out to all the residents and notice that we'll be the new provider effective, is it January first? Is that when the contract's up? Um, with that, we'll give them information about the new system, the FAQ is on this one, one piece of paper, two sided, with a return envelope, that they can put their own, I think they have to put their own stamp on it, and they can change their cart size ahead of time. We'll give a deadline for that cart order form to be brought back to us, and then you can publicize it as much as you want, we'll bring examples of carts, with signage for people, seeing comes to Village Hall, if that's okay with you.
Can we do that during a coffee with the cops?
That's actually.
That would be the best time, cause the older residents.
When is, is that coming up soon or?
It's on a Thursday.
It's this week, Thursday.
Oh, not this week, but.
But you do it again, we do it again.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Funny, yeah, we got.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll figure out what works best, and Joel will be hand in hand with you to check all the boxes, and we'll get the orders in, we'll get everything done, and then we do the cart implementation, we deliver the carts, you guys get a daily notice on how things are going with that. It'll probably be usually the second week of December is when we try to do it, so before the Christmas time, but it's important that we communicate well, because we wanna make sure people start using, like, figure out when your last pickup was, figure out when, for you guys to tell you what it is today, as of this date, start putting your stuff in the carts, cause Town and Country's not gonna service the carts, right?
Yeah.
And it's the holidays, so, um, and we'll figure out what day of service, I think that, that was, you know, what is the current day of service right now?
Friday.
Friday morning, okay. So, we will work on all the details and make sure that everybody feels really good about things, and I just wanna thank you all for your confidence and optimism.
Thank you.
Thanks for your.
Thank you.
Be able to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry I called you Sue.
They don't let me have the office anymore, cool deal. What if you something easy?
Thank you.
Nice, nice.
You wanna do something easy, do you remember we.
Yeah, we, let's do, let's do the. So, we're gonna take up the operator license, um, for, for Bonnie Herring, it's just a renewal, as every year for since eighteen twelve.
Well, no.
Nineteen seventy.
There's a lot of years that we didn't approve her, we, she just didn't have one.
Oh.
Well. I'll move approval of Bonnie Herring.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Get that done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
For Bonnie at the bowling alley.
Discussion action, Dan and I were true up.
Okay, we need numbers, so, um, and Brian was gone last, on vacation, so I'd.
Well, here's what I vote for numbers.
Okay.
If this is what you're looking for, I don't know. Uh, right now, we have six hundred and thirty-two sewer customers as of August thirty-first. Um, in this last year, two thousand twenty-two, our true up was twenty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, sixty-five cents.
Wait, how much?
Twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, sixty-five cents.
Okay, um, that's without the three months or two months of reduction. This, this check, this check was just issued, so the, the two months reduction was, is still part of that, too.
Okay, and I didn't bring those.
Okay.
So what are we looking for on the true up?
So, um, okay, I guess what, what it is is, um, the capital improvements done, it was done back in twenty twenty. Um, so we reduced, just for the capital improvement parts, we reduced from a fourteen or sixteen dollar charge per RLU to a three dollar charge, RPO, per, art, RLU, cause now, um, Dan and I was only collecting up to a million dollars for the future capital improvements. So, that money, we still collect from the village residents, but we don't have to pay Dan Iowa anymore, and that's at like, uh, thirteen to sixteen thousand dollar a month. Sixteen, yeah, thirteen to sixteen thousand dollar a month payment that we're collecting on, that the residents are paying, but we're not paying to Dan Iowa anymore. So that's just for the future capital, I don't know, there's.
Thirteen thousand a month, hand over hand.
Thirteen to sixteen dollars a month.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
No, I've heard that.
At thousand, like, holy, wait, my numbers are wrong.
Um, so anyways, at some point, I think we need to either think about the residents getting some money back, um, because that money was just collected to bring up the amount to pay for Dan Iowa once, to get the money to repay for Dan Iowa. So, uh, what it was is collecting money for the first twenty years or something like that, to, to be able to build the.
Be able to build onto the plan.
Yeah, so, I'm just not sure on, I was trying.
So that's done, so what you're saying is you think that we should, we either need to drop it, we need to figure out how to get that to stop taking that from.
For, yeah, for that, cause we still, we still collect.
That portion of it.
Drop it off the seat.
We still collect.
Or, or then we need to relocate, reallocate it, can we do that?
You can, but then you're still taking the money from the residents for.
Is Dan Iowa not making plans for any new construction or maintenance?
They are, that's why they're collecting the, the future improvement, but it's just, it's a lower amount.
So the village will be expected to pay a portion of that when that happens?
Yes, that will happen too, but right now, we're sitting with.
So we kind of raise the rates at that time, or?
Put this money towards.
Well, you wouldn't, you'd still be collecting the money, just not all of the future improvement plans, you're still collecting, you know, you're still making the payments on the regular stuff.
I think it's hard.
We still pay, we still pay the future improvement.
I think it'd be hard to, one, give the money back to the customers because.
It's in RLU, so it's per household, that, the future improvement's not.
For twenty years or however long this has been collected.
No, 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 no.
This is his year.
It's done, it, well, it was done in twenty twenty.
Yep.
Till June of twenty twenty.
So how many of those RLU customers have maybe moved away? How many people are still here, and then how do you?
I'm not saying give the money back, I'm saying stop collecting the money, stop collecting the fourteen dollars instead of three dollars that we're supposed to be collecting.
So you're saying lowering it from the fourteen?
And that would give them.
Yeah, because that's all PSC regularly.
No, it's, it's just on RLUs. It's, everything else is based off a certain price, like, uh, eighty-one cents a gallon or, I don't know how that works, but.
I'd like more information.
Yeah, well, we need a lot more numbers.
Can we sell this and bring this up when we have actual employees?
But the true up is money that our residents overpaid.
Yeah.
Throughout the year, so that's different than.
It happens every year.
Yeah, that happens every year, and it's always.
So that number, that number that you gave Shelley, twenty-one thousand six hundred and nine sixty-something, is what our residents, you're saying our residents have overpaid to date this year.
Well, no, plus, plus the.
Or since, or since twenty twenty.
Plus, no, since, for just this year, but it's plus the reduction that we had on the last two bills, or three bills, I don't know how many, we got reduction on, but, yeah.
So we need some more numbers and put it on the next agenda and see what.
I would, um, yeah, I wish I had the numbers for.
Is that something to invite, uh, your Tucker Bryant from Dana?
I would like to, I would like to.
I really wonder about Town and Country, too.
I would like to have him come in and kinda, just find out how we adjust to our, cause when the plant was built, that's when all this money was taken for, and everybody's like, oh, we're paying too much, we're paying too much, and now it's paid for and we're still collecting it, so it's like, why are we still collecting it if we're paid for already?
Yeah, see, I was also a big fan back when I was standing there, or where the, the new connection fees, when a new place is built, the connection fees for that.
Yeah.
I thought they should go back to the villages, because it's the villages that has paid for the investment in the thing. And, and they never agreed with that, but it, uh, all they did was put it in the pool back then, they started to give some of it back.
I guess one of the things I would bring up is we have debt related to sewer, and, you know, why should we not put any funds on towards that debt?
Well, then let's do it, instead of sitting with half a million in sewer, I mean, you can't.
Well, you guys remember, our sewer debt is also tied to other debt with it, so when we did a borrowing, it's sewer and water together.
Yes.
Or sewer and whatever else together, so, yep, I'm happy to dump it all on there to pay for that loan, but if loans come due at a certain point, are we gonna pay off the other portion of the water in its entirety?
Well, pay the, pay the sewer part off, that we all, I mean, cause having that money sitting in your treasures report all the time, it's like, it's getting to be too much money sitting in there.
Let's get some numbers.
I, I understand. I understand what you're saying, and I agree that we're, that, when you're saying we're overcharging.
I'm not saying that we have to give it back, but let's, let's deal it, yeah.
Figure out what else we're doing with it, yeah, yeah, I agree, but I.
I'm good with it, I'm good with it. Yeah.
Okay.
Let's get this through numbers and then figure out what to do. Alright. Discussion action on resolutions, we'll do these individually. So F, number I is, uh, annual library tax resolution, uh, this is every year we do this.
Yeah, but don't we do it in April when we have new carts?
Actually, we usually do this in October, but we have this in advance.
Well, I move we accept resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh seven, requesting exemptions from county library tax.
Second.
Any more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Okay, the next one is a resolution in support of, and this is what we've talked about before, Village Ed Farms LLC, um, they're going.
You wanna wait on that?
You wanna wait till Mike comes back or?
No, not really.
Okay.
There was the Perel thing, we already.
Yeah, but they need a resolution from us to get an appraisal, because we have extraterritorial jurisdiction, so we have to pass something.
And so, I see that down in here, we do have it listed.
Yep.
That all parties above work together to acquire and cite a public recreational trail corridor.
Yep.
Right, so we want UTV or bike path or whatever through there, so then I will make a resolution to support resolution number twenty twenty-two dash oh eight. I'll second.
Wait, I thought you wanted that guy to be here.
And they said no.
They said no.
New guy?
Okay, so.
We discussed already.
It's not our fault.
We discussed already.
I'm not changing the agenda to, I mean, it, it's, in the end, that's what he's looking for.
Yeah, yeah, and this is what we discussed.
Yeah, plan commission approved.
It's exactly what we discussed.
Okay.
The last line of the, we're in discussion phase, right?
Yes, I was, I was wondering.
The last line as well, I think, US here, or the quiet enjoyment of their property, if we're saying we wanna build like snowmobile trails or four wheeler trails.
Then I can let you.
How to, yeah, so like, this almost seems like a contradiction here.
Yeah.
Like, you could put a, a recreational trail in, as long as it doesn't, uh, interrupt the quiet enjoyment of their property, well, I mean, who's to say what that is?
I agree.
Okay, was there a second on the motion?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
What it was, was, this doesn't mean it's ever gonna happen, it's still contingent on them wanting a trail.
Right.
If we didn't put it in here, no trail would ever be done.
Right.
Okay, but I agree with what he's saying, the quiet enjoyment of their property.
We basically, they.
They don't have to give in ever for a thing, but if it wasn't in here, if they sold their land or something changed in the future, if it wasn't in here, we'd never get it.
Okay, so what you're saying is that we have to go with that quiet enjoyment of their property?
Or can we drop it at LLC farm period?
What, what he's saying is, it's still their property and they don't have to let us put a trail on their property anyway. But if, when they go through this process, you have one shot to add potential land use, to add potential land uses to it.
Oh, I get what you're saying, yes.
Doesn't matter what it says, if they don't want it, it ain't gonna happen.
So, it also says in here that, what does it say, to forego future annexing within the portion of the new.
That's any.
That was what we already talked about, not yet.
Yeah, well, we didn't talk.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did, and they were here, they had the whole board.
It went through plan and, or?
It went through plan, but I don't think.
No, no, it went through board, yeah, absolutely went through.
So what is, so what is the annex, so we can't annex anything, or just that?
You can't annex anything.
I mean, one piece that they will probably annex in, cause they want to build that house.
Oh, in front of their house.
Which is currently along, which is currently along Blue Mountain.
So what I'm saying, does it stop us from annexing any of their land in the future?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Can do it.
But, okay, so.
I mean, that would just, that could hurt the village later and.
Sure does.
But because of the floodplain current, the way the floodplain is and where that property, if we could annex, it wouldn't make sense to anyway, there's no way to run utilities, road or anything to it in a feasible manner.
So here, yeah.
So hypothetical.
I just.
Beautiful valley, it's a beautiful part of, I, I like that part.
Hypothetical, we say no to this resolution.
Yeah.
What does that mean, what does that mean?
It means that they wouldn't be able to do their. It means that they probably wouldn't be able to do what they wanna do.
They wouldn't be able to conserve the land as ad use, which is what they wanna.
And, here, here's my.
Allow for a developer, somebody to come in later on.
Yeah, but most of it's undevelopable, anyway, except farther back, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, I get.
And no, there was, there were six lots out there, right, isn't that what they were saying, there are six lots that could be developed, and that's what Black Earth has like a little tie on.
Yeah, but.
There's a full second row or something.
Well, it was just bad, there was.
No, yeah.
Yeah, right there.
Right there. Yeah, that's the only spot right there that's gonna be developed, and by the, it would not be constructive to move, to, uh, out there.
Well, you put a whole street on.
Yeah, put the street out there for not having enough houses to pay for that.
And then, yeah, all the parts.
But they're saying any of their lands, right, you can, we're not gonna.
So you could never go off this valley and develop.
No, anything.
Absolutely can't.
Absolutely, right.
Absolutely will not.
Watch it.
Which is exactly what George Lucy did with his, too.
Yeah.
And how did that affect, was that a good outcome, bad?
No, well, well, we learned, because we can't put any type of a trail through it.
Because it was never.
Because it was never, it was never listed.
Because this last contingency.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
By putting that in there.
So here, here's the thing.
For the quiet enjoyment.
It's been in their family, it's their family farm, it's been in their family for a long time. And for us to try going what they can do with their land, if they wanna put it in the conservancy, is pretty hard.
I agree, man.
I think it's.
It'd be different if it was a developer that just wanted, wanna put it in a conservancy, I'd say, no way.
Right.
You know?
And, and I, I support their decision, wanna keep it in the conservancy, because we are losing land to sprawl, right, so it's nice that people are considering that. My hesitation with it is just that we also want to, uh, build up our community as a ecotourism.
Yeah.
And if we can't have connecting trails, that ecotourism kind of.
Here's, here's the problem, though, their land never changes hands until the future, they can sell it.
Right.
They have to go by this conservancy, um, but it never changes and it can never be brought back into anything else.
Can never be, if this happens, they can never be brought back in.
Right.
Yeah.
And.
Well, they're, they're planning on doing the conservancy anyway, whether we, right, this just gives up.
When you got regulations and states stopped paying you to do this, why wouldn't you do it?
Right, so that's what I'm saying, at least this gives us the option to have a little bit of, can we do this?
Yeah.
Well, I thought, I thought that the whole issue was that we had to approve, we had to relinquish our annexation rights, right, in order to go through this.
On the law notice. Six, on the law notice.
No, it's the whole property.
Not technically.
Everything that they own.
Partion of that was a deal that they had made that was not binding, so they would never have to develop it if they didn't want anyways, so.
So does that also stop future family from?
Absolutely.
Get rid of the health.
If they sell their farm, they can sell their farm later, and the next people have to agree by, by their conservancy.
And they could never, we could never annex the land after that either.
Okay, yeah.
But is that land even useful to us?
Not.
And from a village perspective?
Which is why those.
Not, not really.
I mean.
Maybe.
If you get way up in this pocket, I mean, that's all.
Any girl.
But how are you gonna get that?
Yeah, they, they gotta, you're going through. Yeah, they, they gotta, you're going through. Build infrastructure all the way up to that, yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, you, you can't blame what's left.
It's just our floodplain. That's not, but it's you can't-
So they just gotta build infrastructure from a road or something to get here and that's-
Yeah, you're making it look like it's like a long way away.
And it could all be dumped. It could be dumped, but it's like, do you really wanna do that again?
Well, I mean, if we can't go any other direction, what happens later when we can't?
Well, I know, because if you look, they're going up Turkey Road right now. We've passed one of them and that's, it's like-
Yeah. The elect, yeah.
And we've already got electrical out there and so it might be-
So we've already, we've already pretty much agreed to it. We're just looking for the resolution.
Yeah, yeah. We've already, last, the last meeting, we heard you-
That was it, yeah.
Oh, two meetings ago. It was the last one.
Whatever it was. He already said, yep, we're all in.
So the only reason we didn't have a resolution at the last one is we wasn't sure we needed to because it's not, except for our extraterritorial jurisdictions, it's all in the township.
Yeah.
So the township will pass it.
Okay.
So.
Okay, anyway, let's vote in the votes.
They, they need our support of to get them, to get an appraisal.
So if we don't, I mean, if we did, if we don't approve this, they go along with what they're gonna do?
It, it'd be, it, it would be hard for them to do what they wanna do.
We still have no power later?
It would be hard for them to do what they wanna do, right?
Uh, well, on different levels. So the, the first one is the court team.
That's real, true.
The, the area that's a transition zone, that's the part that happens, that we're talking about? Yeah, that's the part right now where an appraiser is gonna look at that and say, well, is this getting annexed or not? And that's the whole, you know, these aren't binding resolutions. This is just to give the appraiser some comfort level that village is okay with it, town is okay with it, I can make a judgment on that.
Well, this isn't binding.
And this is binding.
But what is binding is the conservancy.
Well, yes, so.
So that's what he's worrying about.
Then, so let's just give up a hypothetical. They could leave that ag transition zone out of there to say that's not gonna be the easement. Which didn't support it. We would leave it out. And then we would do an appraisal and only do the easement on the part that's outside of that area.
So you can put it in conservancy no matter what we say?
Well.
Right?
That's not true.
Well, no, what he's, what? What you were saying is about being out on the outside of the floodplain clear out there, right?
Yeah.
Right there. They can do whatever they wanna do with that land right now anyway. We're not, we can't tell them.
No, that's not true. So that's not true. So that's not true.
There is a, you know, places in this country, mostly on the east coast, and there's concerns where town planning goes out the window because these land trusts are coming in and putting easements on. And, you know, we're, we're now an accredited land trust now for a number of years. National organization is, you know, they're not really high on, on grill, land use planning, uh, because it doesn't help in the long run. I, you know, just imagine, you know, thousands of meetings like this and it just doesn't help. So our goal is to have everyone on board and satisfied with the outcome.
If that land goes in a conservancy, what does that mean for that land? Does it mean it can never be built on? It can never be sold? It can never, what does that mean?
Yeah, I mean.
It can never be built on?
Mitch is correct. Well, it can have ag buildings built on it. So let's say they wanted a new, uh, you know, brown bill that are new machine shed or a, a market, farm market produce stand. You can have ag buildings on it, anything that furthers an ag purpose. And you gotta remember, this is the proposal, at least this is half paid for by USDA, so it's not-
Right.
It's not something that's gonna be far, far out there. Um, but they can't build, uh, basically non-agricultural buildings.
So they can't build a house in the middle?
No, and, and that's why one of the things, I don't know if you guys saw the-
Yeah, that's that one slot in front of their house that they want to keep.
Yes, that's when they wanna put that house.
Yeah, and, and hook to the city water sewer.
Yeah, so, but yes, uh, James is correct. On that part that's in the easement, either the Ralphs or whoever might own it in the future be able to put buildings on there. And that is general. Can I say it? I mean, as private land, it's always gonna be subject to eminent domain. And the, the only question is, well, you know, half of this money comes from the federal government. So, uh, there is a hierarchy in this country. And it probably comes as no surprise to folks that, that the federal government sometimes gets more say than a village does. But, um, the village still has its eminent domain powers. If they can make an argument why, hey, we really need this for this, this, or this, and the public purposes, the public benefits, all those things you normally would have to go through, I don't think anyone's gonna fight you on that. I mean, that, that's a power that we're not trying to take from you.
It makes, to put a road up for that couple lots there makes no sense.
Right.
And right now, to put anything out through to put, build the valley to get the infrastructure, wouldn't make sense for us either.
And it's not gonna-
And what really don't make sense is trying to tell that farmer who's owned it for generations what he can do with it. I'm not.
Yeah, and, and I see that as a good way to protect us from getting power lines or anything.
Now, what I am against is the USDA groundswell and that going out and doing this around our village a lot. Because it does hurt us. And I'd rather see them do it around Madison so they stop coming over.
It's not gonna happen.
I know.
I mean, everybody's planning for growth and then-
It never seems to happen around now.
You just don't wanna stop yourself from being able to grow if you can. And I don't know, we don't know who owns the land next year.
We've got a, we've got a motion and a second on the table to accept the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, passes.
So you're welcome. Thank you. And I'll just say that, uh, you know, this is kind of that first square right now. So we haven't written the easement. We don't know what land will be in it yet. So there'll be more interaction with the office as we get further down the process. They're gonna do certainly in a couple of weeks.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry I had to ditch you on you, but I had another reason meeting up at the, up at the reason.
It's alright, we almost ditched on you.
Perfect timing.
And I just walked in, I was just gonna hand out the packets for him and they said, oh, you're just in time, so they, they just gave me that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Alright.
Oh, and I can say it now since I'm not trying to influence you, but I hope you enjoy the new Hoover piece.
Oh, yeah. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, uh, you wanna explain this next resolution with his, uh, retirement?
I do, yes. Yes, it is. So Kurt Wazinski and Gail Sumy are with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. Uh, Kurt, in that handout that passed and gave you is the, uh, has been with the league for many, many years. They are both retiring. And the league asked if we would consider passing a resolution thanking them both for their service to our communities. We're putting them together together for the retail rent party and we'll see for you. So Kurt was the lobbyist for the league who has, uh, again, since nineteen eighty-seven, has fought for our communities at the state level. Gail has done the right hand as a whole department.
I would move approval of resolution twenty-two dash oh-nine for the resolution recognition of Kurt Wazinski and Gail Sumy.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. This is combined authorization resolution for urban forest grant and urban forest catastrophe storm grant. Resolution twenty-two-two dash ten.
Yeah, okay, so, um, Jared might have to help me just a little bit with this. But we just received this grant opportunity from the D N R that, uh, I think speaks volumes to what the parks committee has been trying to do with trees and whatnot throughout the community. The grant application deadline is October third and it needs to have a resolution accompanied with it if we're going to apply.
Not really. I mean, I got the hit some.
It's a lot of paper.
Yeah, it's like thirty pages. I got to break them over it. Um, some of the things that we could potentially use this for on page three, you know, the, they got the Emerald Dash four, uh, tree planting, which we wanna do in Veterans Park, uh, maintenance of trees. Few other things that maybe not change to us, furthering the staff training. I don't know what stackings and stuff, but, you know, I'm all for more training than somebody else can pay for it. Um, but yeah, so there's, I, I didn't get through it, through it, but I think there's potential there. It's all, it's, the grants go from one thousand to five thousand, uh, with a fifty percent reimbursement of the project. So if we spend twenty-five hundred, they'd reimburse us the seventeen hundred, uh, if we got the grant. I think with the trees that we're taking down and what we're seeing with the Emerald Dash four and stuff, I think with, there's potential for it. I would have to kind of look through this more to be able to itemize it a little better, but I think there's potential there for us.
The one thing that caught my eye with this is the startup grant. So, um, but we don't have a real plan yet. I mean, the startup grant for that, there's, uh, three, uh, eight components that we can apply for and that would be, you know, tree planting, tree pruning, tree removal, tree inventory, insectic disease treatment, urban forestry management plan, um, information and outreach, staff training. And that's part of the startup grant.
Oh, kicking down holes and filling holes to put a tree on top.
Well, God, I mean, I think it has a, it's a bit more management. I don't know, but I wanted to throw that out because we won't need to get it to go before.
Right, so we'll pass a resolution, okay, and go for the grant. I make a motion, we pass resolution twenty-two-two dash ten. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Discussion action Halloween hours.
Oh, yeah.
The pork stuff.
I know, we're getting called on.
Heated as that trash.
I never see them go to a Halloween party for some. Alright, so what are we looking at?
It's been five days, it's gonna last.
So, I think that's a good time.
Five years at least.
Yeah.
Five days, it's good.
I make a motion, I make a motion, we set the Halloween hours from five to eight.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, discussion action, village board minutes, eight, two of twenty-two.
I'm of approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, financials, treasurer report.
Alright, the treasurer's report that goes through, uh, July thirty-first of, of this year. And at this time, we are sitting with four million in all accounts. Uh, our electric CD had about three hundred and forty-five thousand of it moved to the general fund and that was to start to set up that escrow for the city of Evansville on the transformer. That escrow account has been set up and city of Evansville should have received their first payment of a hundred and nine per the agreement we have. So the electric fund and the general, uh, checkbook that you're seeing is reduced due to that transfer at this time. It's going to change in August that escrow was set up and that money was moved. So in June, treasurer's report, the electric cash was like a negative seven hundred thousand. This month, it's at four hundred and twenty-three negative because of that three hundred and forty-five going into it, so it reduced. Next month, that escrow account is set up and we'll see that on the treasurer's report as a separate line item. And that will change those, uh, in the- That payments were made in July on a two thousand thirteen debt of about eighty-six thousand dollars. Uh, that debt was old debt from before I arrived in here, general capital, water and sewer. Um, Dana, this kind of speaks just a little bit to what we were talking earlier. And the water sewer portion of this debt, the final payment is next year in the spring. That debt is off the water. About forty-five thousand outstanding on that water sewer.
Years in the making.
And I think that was a refinance of capital.
Yeah, it's been refinanced a couple, two, two times at least.
So, um, okay, so revenue and expenses, we'll move over to that portion. These are through the month of August and where we should be about fifty-six percent of budget at this point. In the general fund, our revenues are now sitting at eighty-seven percent. You'll see that, uh, it had been very low before, but we had the August tax numbers come in, which settles up that revenue with general property taxes. Expenses are sitting at about fifty-five percent on the general fund. Um, in the general fund, our pilot is outstanding for benchmark. We have an agreement with Heartland, uh, nursing home here. We've had it outstanding for years. They are tax exempt. However, there's a tax pilot agreement, which, uh, they owe us every year. Um, it was expected to be about ninety-nine hundred this year. I did get notice in today's mail that their parent company has filed for bankruptcy. Do not know how to, um, um, so with that, we're gonna also bring up our ARPA funds of a hundred and forty thousand. Were also transferred in the month of August to a separate account in our LGIP. So next month, as well as the escrow account, you'll see a separate LGIP just for the ARPA funds that we have remaining above to use. On the electric side, our revenues are sitting at about seventy-one percent with expenses at sixty-four percent. Water revenues are at sixty-eight percent with expenses at fifty-nine percent. Tree revenues are at sixty-seven percent with expenses at forty-eight percent. So we are above expected budget numbers currently. Um, going back to the electric, the electric devaluation, I had had Bear Financial Services take a look at our electric utility. And they are referring us to a couple others for a more formal review of that. Right now, what they're seeing is our capital that was funded for by operating revenues and not borrowed for. I think there's approximately eight hundred thousand in capital items that have been done since twenty-eighteen that we paid for out of our operating revenue. They have recommended, uh, two firms to take a look at that. And I know Sean recommended, uh, another gentleman. Uh, I also spoke to Ellers, our financial advisors, who would like to take another look at this. They feel that they do owe us that review.
Didn't we ask them to do that once already?
Ellers, we had them do an analysis when we did the new borrowing last year. And at that point, they said our electric revenues were doing well enough.
To pay that back.
Yeah, so they would like to take another look at this to say, hey.
Aye, aye, aye.
Big time.
So that is on your financials. They do want to, um, that's what I did hand out, it's budget separation timeline sheet for everybody. At this point, a lot of our committees have already gone through a rough draft budget. And I'll start pulling those numbers into one, uh, to the revenue and expense, general function. So you'll probably get a draft of that coming up very shortly, at least by the end of the month. And I need to add in, of course, payroll numbers and whatnot for that. So we need to have our workshop scheduled probably no later than October thirteenth. And that, that, that because of the publication deadlines, we have to meet that tutorial. So this has to be, um, summary published to publications in advance of the public hearing, which we have typically done at our November board meeting, which is November first. So, um, that's in mind. And, uh, speaking of grants, the recycling grant application is due October first. So I will be working on getting that done and turning in. So hopefully, we have two, two grant opportunities coming up here.
But we did not give the one.
We did not, no. Thank you for bringing that up.
That's the third point away.
We were one tenth of a point out, out, uh, in the north mountain. And, um, it's possible that we could still probably do it with someone that's not just up to the grant. Uh, but the other side of it was because we got this grant, purchased the property through ground swell last year, although we looked at it just a little bit, connected it.
Okay, we move, we accept treasurer's report. Last second. Any discussion?
Two months of seconds.
How was it? Kind of a second fair. Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Discussion action on invoices to be paid.
I'd move approval of invoices to be presented. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, reports. Vanguard. Alright, we, uh, had a Vanguard meeting tonight before this meeting. Um, there was nothing major going on right now. Um, we were talking about a surcharge on a new bucket truck of about twelve thousand dollars. It's no choice. Um. Yeah, not happy about it, but what do you do?
No choice.
You can turn down the truck.
It just aged, it aged and had to be replaced?
Um, yeah, it was, it was already bought. The surcharge for the people-
Truck was bought and there's a steel surcharge.
Bucket is for the bucket that, uh-
Not coming from the company we're buying the vehicle from, it's coming from their supply.
Who makes this stuff?
Who makes that?
Yeah, so I, it's happening a lot. I know, I was just talking to Dan and he said, uh, there's a surcharge on a fire truck coming up too, of like, I forget who he said, but it was like thirty-three thousand dollar surcharge. You're there or you're on the fire truck.
Yeah, actually, um, the thing that Scott handed out, Motai had a thirty-one thousand on the truck.
Yeah, so, uh, we, uh, voted to accept it and, uh, because if we cancel it, we bought the truck, the whole truck goes up there, so.
And the money was in the fund to do it.
Yeah, and the money was in their truck fund anyway. Um, we're gonna do reviews by the end of the year and bring them, take them back to the commission. And, uh, the next meeting is the sixteenth of November?
It's called the November?
I think so. I wrote it on my thirty-dollar paper. Do it every other month. Fire district.
Hello, we met on September first, just last week. We did the budget hearing first. Um, I get all choked up when I talk. So the budget, uh, we will be town of, or village of Black Earth. And we'll have an increase of about four hundred and seventy-four dollars. Prior year, I'm a whore. And we moved that through the regular meeting, uh, and that was approved. Under the chief's report, he reported that he is continuing or restarting discussions with Mesa Fire to team up departments and work together going forward. So Chief Dan is, is hot on that trail. Um, we rewarded a federal American firefighter's grant of seventy-five thousand for training, um, in gear, personal equipment for water rescue. Two years to use the money. It's a regional grant that will facilitate other departments around Dane County will participate. Uh, equipment, we had twenty air packs that were gifted by a department in Chicago. And they should be here this weekend. And that's good, and it helps to keep those costs off the budget when they're donated like that. And they trained in Verona for apartment buildings that were acquired for live fire burn. So it was a great training opportunity. Our next meeting is November third.
Air packs aren't there yet, but they will be next weekend.
Okay.
What are the air packs?
Uh, S C B A for going in fires. So, um, a fire department that I'm familiar with, who's also a, a chief on that department, um, we actually gained some packs from them back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Actually, no, it was two thousand and twelve. And they got another grant for packs that they bought then. Can we get those packs? They're, they're pretty good.
Those are reused, reusable.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
They're just like screwed up.
Uh, one pack is model, um, and mask is worth about forty-five hundred now.
Yeah.
And they gave us twenty of them?
Twenty of them.
Wow.
Yeah.
And, and they're, yeah, they're replacing ones that are twenty-five years old, so.
Right.
The S C B A pack.
S C B A.
I don't, I don't know if there's a structure here that would require twenty of them once, but they can.
Okay.
No, we, no, we, yeah, it's priced.
Unless you let us get a call over and they do.
But that gift has continued to keep that off our, off, off, the registered budget, so it's been great.
And they're really only ten-year-old packs, so. Alright, um, Dana, Iowa?
We met on August eighteenth, um, through financials, um, replacement bills, normal stuff, no discharge violations. And Johnson and Block is gonna do an audit starting in September. Starting in two weeks. Our next meeting is Thursday, fifteenth, six P M.
E D C, net, at five-thirty on August twenty-second. What did we do? We talked about the elementary school and the purchase of it. We talked about developer's agreement. Gateway gave a presentation. Jordan could not be present. Chamber gave a, kind of a presentation. They're trying to figure out where they're going with the Chamber. Hopefully, they'll know more by the next meeting. So we're unsure yet what's gonna happen with the Chamber. They're talking about doing some, like a wine walk or something for fundraiser, or maybe chili or something this fall.
Chili and wine.
On a Saturday.
Chili and wine.
Chili and wine. You can't beat that, right?
Yeah. They were gonna throw out.
November twenty-sixth.
Reinforcement.
Small Business Saturday, they're trying to do that too, and they're gonna try to get ahold of, um, buyers and different businesses and see if they wanna set up, and people go around and buy, and so.
This is the Chamber, just gonna try?
Yeah.
So there is?
Kind of the Chamber. I don't have to say we'll be the Chamber.
So they were gonna throw out an email to folks to see about interest.
Yes, they're members of the Chamber, they're gonna send them an email.
And then bring it back to the E D C committee.
Yeah. All right. Our next meeting will be September twenty-eighth at five-thirty. All right, EMS.
We have not met since July. The Budget Committee for EMS did meet end of August, so I expect to have more information on budget from them coming up. We do meet September eighth, so a couple days, at six-thirty. Are you gonna need budget, whatever, I get budget information from them. When, when do you need that, I guess I should say?
I do, before the end of the month.
Okay.
They're usually pretty good, I have to think, it's all just automatically sending it out on substitute.
Yeah.
Did, excuse me, did Barb send you the fire?
She did.
Okay, you did get that, okay, great. Okay, sorry.
I gotta stop combing in everywhere.
I know. As long as it's not in my lap to get it to you, because that's gonna be a problem.
Yeah, so that's it, September eighth, September ninth. Perfect.
Library Board.
Okay, I'm gonna try not to steal all of Bailey's thunder, since she sat here so patiently. But just a couple items, we met on August sixteenth. You're gonna talk about field day success? Is that in your budget? Well, pre-auction, or the, yeah, silent auction sheet, it was a thousand dollars, that pie auction, was the pie auction and the book sale. Between the two of them brought in twenty-two hundred dollars. So it was good. We did approve a flooring option to go with C T W that's gonna replace the floor in the flooring option in the library. Then there was a walkthrough on August thirtieth of the New Heights property, just to take a look at it and see the options there. And we did get a library board letter from the Dean County Libraries that we're gonna be doing the same amount as previous years due to the COVID effect, maintaining the twenty-twenty-one level, to attempt to provide the financial stability that we're all looking for. And then she, I will let her keep more detail, but it was a great program month for July. A successful summer for the library program. And our next meeting is September twentieth. But I'll let her take the thunder for what she needs.
So we are getting new carpet installed, and we are probably going to be amending our library services, but that's to be determined during that amount of time. It'll be October twenty-fourth. We have to talk about that with the library board and make sure everybody, especially with getting the carpet replaced and the teams, who are needing the carpet to have to off gas, will need to find another working solution so that we're still serving folks, but we're not getting our.
Our circulation in our Petron Door account is continuing to increase. And we had an exponential growth in the streaming services that we offer, so Google and Canopy, a lot more people using, which has been really great to see. For our summer library program, we had a total of sixty-eight participants and fifty-eight paper logs completed. We gave out a hundred and seventy-five of our summer library program bags, which is a huge amount. We had thirty-one total events during the summer, and event attendance was four hundred and fifty-five, so that's so many people at each of those events. We gave out teen scratch-off tickets, and we gave out a total of eighty-five of those. So that was something new that we did this year that was at the request of our Teen Advisory Board, so it gave them a chance to kind of win different prizes in addition to kind of their free.
So it was eight, is scratch-off?
Uh, scratch-off tickets, yes. So it had printed on it, you didn't know what you were gonna get, so you could get like a mystery prize, or a candy bouquet, or free book. Most of them were for free books, so we ended up giving out fifty-four of those. But the surprise was really fun for the teens, I think. There's always, you know, a little expectation of something really fun and exciting. Notebook books aren't fun. I did hire two new substitute library assistants. They're still kind of in the training process, but one of them was working tonight, so you saw me kind of duck. We are planning a local author fair for October twenty-first, and I did secure the Black Earth Historical Society building for that, because the program has really grown, and it kind of outgrew this space, so we moved it to the Black Earth Historical Society space. And the marketing for that is underway, so I'll be marketing that pretty much right up until the twenty-first. The Park Passport Program is also underway. We expanded that to Cross Plains and Mesa Maney, and that'll go until October fifteenth. As Terry mentioned, we did do a very preliminary tour of the New Heights Lutheran Church on the thirtieth, just to kind of take a look at it and see, get a feel for the space, and see if that was something that we wanted to pursue further in terms of, you know, the library space. And on a last fun note, we did have a, an incident with a dog in the library. We had a dog with several citations that has been allowed in the library in the past, but that was before the incidents with the dog occurred. It was brought into the library, and I made the decision to ask the dog to leave, but I let the handler know if they were welcome to come back without the dog. Obviously, that didn't go very well, but the dog was wearing a service dog in training vest, but it was also wearing a muzzle. So we, I made the decision with the support, I called Gary Shutz ahead of time to let him know. I do have a drafted animal policy that we'll be discussing at the next meeting to address that, since I didn't have, I didn't have a lot of guidance from our policies, because it's such an unprecedented situation. But guidance and updates from the village regarding what the village and what the police are doing with that situation would be really helpful for me, especially kind of as the situation unfolds, because I'm sure, you know, if it doesn't come up again, I would be surprised. So it would be helpful and appreciated if I could get some, some guidance on that. But in the meantime, I'm doing what I can, and I let my staff know. And as Terry said, our next meeting is September twentieth.
I think we should look at our policy.
Yeah. And you would, we don't have, she would have support, I mean, I would support whatever you need to do within your own confines of the library.
I, I think we should have a policy for the village, that service dogs are allowed, but they have to be certified service dogs.
Yeah.
Because then they're already trained beyond the point of, not, not in training.
Have a proper type of policy.
Documented, right, service dog.
Yeah.
I don't know. Isn't there something about if they are in training, there's something to protect them to go anywhere to be trained? I think she just, I'm not gonna say.
They're tendy, but they have to have a certificate proving they're in a program.
And there's.
That one does not.
The one I think, is this the one I know, that's all.
Yeah. Service dogs are training, under those common state statutes, have the same protection as service dogs.
Right.
And, but they do have to prove that they're being trained.
Exactly, they have to prove it.
And that's when she was asked, is because she could not produce documentation.
Right, and, and because of the specific incident with this dog, I was uncomfortable with having the dog in the library with children.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Perks Committee. Oh, perks. Oh, yeah. Public Works, Scott. Hello. Our last meeting was on August fifteenth, at one o'clock. We did a loud discussion out of the Vanguard, but we did meet tonight, we did hear what's going on there. We had discussion action on the historical plaque. If you'd noticed, that's been taken down now. I'm not sure if the building is, they allowed you to put it on the side of the building, or?
I haven't been in touch with, I did contact, actually, Carl Ox, but haven't heard whether or not they're okay building.
So that's a work in progress. I don't think we want another poll up that we have to shovel snow around. If the plaque can go on the side of the building, I think it'd be better. Discussion action on Jetter. We had a demo on a Jetter that didn't quite get the job done, so we're still testing Jetter systems, that's a work in progress. We're coming up with a procedure for water meter rentals. That's still a work in progress, too. Is that right, Shelley?
I think we, we outlined what those procedures need to be.
Okay, and that'll come up at the next meeting, probably, for final approval.
Does that want to hook up a hydrant, or?
That's up, when you want, it's a swimming pool.
Yeah, okay.
Because we had people coming in for short little bursts.
I use seventy-five gallons per gallon, my lawn.
Yeah. So now, and now it has to be seventeen hundred gallons even for it to save the money.
Well, it, yeah, they can do it for seventy-five gallons, it's a minimum charge.
Right. So discussion action on twenty-three budgeting. We put large items over twenty-five grand to put on a capital improvement plan sheet, separate from the budget items. Payroll increase of four percent based on historic increases. We talked about gas and the inflationary prices. Street maintenance, discussion on Red Hawk subdivision needing crack filling and trip ceiling. Hillside's really in bad shape. We've got a federal grant applied for, we got no status of the grant yet. Sidewalk maintenance includes a provision for rip subdivision pathway discussed to be done. We need to bring that up. So you wanna take over on the PFAS and all that?
Oh, sure.
It says Public Works Director.
Yeah. So we did get a test kit for PFAS. Ours are below the limits of what is really being tested right now, so we're sitting okay. Nitrites and by-product disinfectants testing was done, those are yearly testing that goes out to lab in Baraboo. We did pink crosswalks from stoplights all the way up to Highway K P. Highway fourteen is actually our responsibility, so we're just trying to figure out a good time to get that accomplished.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Still having problems with the mower. This was beginning of August, was back for an issue to McFarland's. They, out of good faith, they called it, quarantined this item for a third repair, entire replacement, so say about a four hundred dollar value. They finally did a one-time, okay, we're gonna take care of it, take care of you guys. I have been working on bids for new mower, actually have a demonstrator one sitting in the shop right now. Public Works hopes and plans are to find a mower that is multipurpose, so mow grass in the summer, do sidewalk snow removal, clean up in the wintertime with a snow blower broom, cab, stuff like that. Kind of still work in progress with street sweeper, jetters, I've got my ears out, City of Middleton is actually getting a brand-new one, so I'm gonna see where we're at and what they're looking at for theirs. That'll probably go to surplus. We talked to Town and Country on some things budget-wise, what we're eligible for, for safe water drinking funds, stuff like that for future projects. Luke is actually currently, this week and next week, in the groundwater and distribution courses to get his water operator certification. Park Street Bridge inspection was done last week. Had an additional fifty yards playground mulch, so we should be good, should be good with all the mulch that needs to be done for a while. Cooper Property had electrical services disconnected by Vanguard, still waiting for M G N E, they estimated September or possibly October for those gas disconnects. School zone signs taken down on Center Street, the flashing beacons for the school zone, which were our property on Mill Street, were down, but D O T has to come and do the removal of school zone signs that are D O T property. Anything else from anybody? Next meeting, we actually did, did an adjustment, an adjustment. Public Works' next meeting will be nineteenth at four-thirty.
Thank you.
Yes.
Parks Committee, let's try this again.
Yeah. So we met August sixteenth, six P M. We did an update on Cooper Property, we made a motion to put the structure up on Wisconsin Surplus to have the auctioned off, while we waited to hear back from the North Nelson Grant, kind of hoping we would've got the grant to help pay for that, but if that didn't go through, we'll have to adjust for that when the budget comes. Ball Field, we talked about it, but there's no action on it. Within Veterans Park, Scott was approached by John Byrd, he wanted to donate a handy, a wheelchair accessible bench to Veterans Park, so we kind of talked about that, gave him some prices and some options and stuff, so.
Picnic table.
Picnic table, what did I say?
Bench.
Bench, picnic table, bench, same thing in my head. Picnic table, though, that is wheelchair accessible. So that will be, that will be ongoing. We heard from Olson Tunes Landscaping that they are willing to donate three trees to Veterans Park for us, and we made a motion to authorize Matt to purchase a fourth tree, and we're expecting to get those in this year, right? Hopefully, yeah, but the way everything's are going, we're hoping to get those in there. We're gonna put it on the south side, start building up that shade back up for the park. That's ongoing. And then we started our budget preparation, which we will continue at our next meeting, which is the twenty-first of September at six P M.
Matt, please.
I'm not on that today.
Well, you, do you screw it up?
I did, I just like listened, I'm like, I gotta screw it up.
I'll be there if you want me.
The police met on August thirty-first. They're gonna do an active shooter here at the dispossessal lane on September nineteenth from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and workplace violence. I'm sure what?
Well, you did, you guys just changed the meeting, did Parks just change to?
Yeah.
Public Works is at?
Public Works at, I'm thinking.
You said the nineteenth, James?
Oh, the Parks, when did we?
No, what date did you just say for the active shooter?
Yeah.
Oh, September nineteenth.
Nineteenth at five-thirty, so it's Public Works.
But you, you picked four-thirty or something, didn't you?
Yeah, but how, because you guys started closing that right down court?
No.
So I think it's.
Public Works is on the nineteenth at four-thirty.
Yep.
And active shooter is here an hour later.
They're just using the meeting room, or are they using the whole building?
They're using, I don't know, I don't know what they're doing.
Well, I would assume that they go in the offices.
Right, but how's the library gonna do?
But the library's.
Yeah, the library's open at that time, so.
Get some practice.
Well, we use the office during COVID, we could use the office in the evening.
I think Bailey's got questions on what that's about for her.
I don't exactly know when you're coming in, before anybody can come in for this, it's open to the public. Little tips and training, I figure this room would be, I don't know.
So they're not actually doing it, feeling?
They're not gonna, training.
They're not training at all.
That I am.
Yeah, then we're just.
I'll follow up to see what they're, they've changed their.
Was your staff gonna be there?
They're gonna tell you what you should do, and they're gonna tell you about.
Isn't staff gonna be here?
The acronym. For your staff, right?
Is your staff gonna be here? Cause I mean, I'm assuming they're doing active shooting, they're gonna do a training for you guys and the staff, wouldn't they?
It's open to everyone.
The public.
Public, so, so.
Okay, so it's not for here, for you guys. It's just for awareness.
Public awareness.
Okay.
Okay.
That makes a big difference for who's gonna be in the library.
Um, Homecoming is September thirtieth.
It's gonna be a drill anyway.
Homecoming what?
Homecoming will be September thirtieth, and the parade is in Black Earth this year, as we know so far.
The thirtieth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, and then after that, they're doing open house at the school at four P M.
Parade at which school?
The only school.
So is this one shut down then, or, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's four P M, right?
Four.
Parade is?
No, the parade's at three-fif, or, uh, three-thirty to four-fifteen, and then, uh, the school will be open at four-fifteen, or four o'clock. Just went over budget otherwise, and. Uh, we kinda talked about, um, budgeting for the police department and kinda what we're gonna do going forward. Um, we had some mishaps of our deputy being pulled out of town during, uh, field days, I guess, um. Yep, so he was pulled to work of regular shift in Dean County.
He made it back, they did find somebody else, but it.
I thought it was a law.
Yeah, but it, uh, at first they said, no, you, we're taking him.
Still a mess because.
So, yeah, so we're still, so we're losing him. We could lose him anytime, and they can pull, apparently now Dean County can pull them, or it's always something like that, I guess, he can pull them anytime out of Black Earth to go work somewhere else.
To cover the hours.
Because they are sort of, yeah.
Because they're.
We're not paying for it at that.
Not at all.
No, we don't pay for it, but we don't have a cop.
They need.
And being that we only have one cop now.
And it was really nice on a field day's weekend, when you could try something like that.
Yeah.
And he did make them aware that it was field day's weekends, they all, all his senior officers knew what was going on, right? That's how I took it. And, yeah, and they still told.
Deputies short on the road right now.
Wow. So.
How many trumps the village, so they can go in there?
Yeah, as, as still not on the ball.
See who's online.
Nobody.
As has been told, is the Sheriff's Department's a real shit show right now.
Uh, I'd agree with that.
And are we still out to November before our officer gets out of training?
November twenty, or nineteenth, she said the twentieth, I don't know. So, yeah, sometime.
Yeah, I originally heard December.
Yeah.
Yeah, they told, yeah. Uh, our next meeting will be September twenty-seventh. Does that sound right?
That's a two-day.
Well, I just can't, I didn't, oh, I suppose, yeah, twenty-seventh, I think.
Yeah, twenty-seventh.
Okay, at six-fifteen P M.
We're very, to the point, with what we saw with the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, yeah, and they didn't care, I mean, they really didn't care what our opinion was on it, at all.
I mean, there's no, I mean.
Let's see, they go that way the last five years, then.
I mean, it's not like we could go to another police.
Scott, it was basically like.
Well, they did talk about exploring.
Yeah, and.
Going on our own if this continues for.
It, it was basically like, you do what you do, but they didn't care.
Yeah. Anyway, we'll see.
So.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. All right, any other business that can be brought before the board or future agenda? I think animal policy, we'll put that back on. Um, I think you need to readjust your rates based upon.
I'll base it upon, I'll do a whole new comparison.
You wanna put the, so animal policy?
Yep. So we, and will you have some, you have some done now, or you?
I have a draft done, but it hasn't been approved by the board, but, um, I think.
I'd like it to be the same if we can work together.
After our, after our next meeting, it would be able to be shared, so.
Okay.
We meet on the twentieth, right?
Oh, yeah.
So from now, what, does she just have to say, I need to see the documents? That it's a training, a dog and training, or, I mean, is there?
Whether it was incidents with the dog, you, you have a.
No, but it, oh, so she has every right to.
Yep, she has every right to what she needs to do.
Well, and with, um, with service dogs too, if, even if they are like a certified service dog, if they're not behaving, that's true, for a public space, you can still ask the dog.
Yeah. All right, so anything else?
Yeah, no, that's, that's great.
What was the other thing you wanted to put on the agenda?
Huh?
Animal policy.
Garbage, garbage revenue stream.
Could we add to that to identify maybe where that would go if we went that way?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, identification of where we want.
We can do all that.
You don't mark that money, so.
Yeah. All right. Meeting, uh, next meeting will be October fourth, twenty-twenty.
Two.
I must get.
All right. I'll enter a motion.
Wait, and Joint Review Board is nine, is September fourteenth at four thirty, so.
What day is that?
Uh, that'll be next week.
At what time?
Four thirty, if you're on that Joint Review Board.
September fourteenth.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
So like, people don't work that are on the board, Shelley?
It's the county, the state, they all come in on, on Zoom, and Ellis comes in, and Michelle Reel, and.
And what time is it?
That's at four thirty.
What is it, joint?
It's Joint Review Board, it's for tip districts, we have to have an annual tip review.
So who's on Joint Review?
There, and Michelle Reel.
Oh.
Oh, I was gonna say, it's not even on here.
No, but he's gonna.
Sorry, we don't know.
Shit, I wasn't.
You go, Mitch.
You're the one making the big bucks.
You do, can share that, Mitch.
Um, do you need a motion?
Do you have to have a filing out by the gates or a notice, or is that?
I don't know, from hours?
Yeah, that's that, it's already, it's on to the papers.
Okay, perfect.
We're gonna post it out in the wrong.
You wanna make a motion to what?
Adjournment.
All right. Do you like it?
All in favor?
Aye. All right, hey, Matt, we got another meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet.
It's gonna have to be short.
Awesome, you heard it, he.